Good morning, everyone, on this great snowy day in Carson City. It's Thursday, February 18th. It is just after 8:30 a.m. We're at the community center at the Sierra Room, 851 East Williams Street, and I hope everyone is safe out there and driving slow. Looks like the snow has let up just a little bit here. Well, we got started here, but it's coming down pretty good. So, Sue, can we have a roll call to get started?
Good morning. Supervisor Baugh, Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor Bagwell, Supervisor Shirk, Mayor Crowell, we have a call.
Good. Did Reverend McCourt, is he here this morning?
He just walked out.
Pardon me?
I think he just walked out the door.
Is he? We'll see. I don't know if Bill's here or not. Hang on a minute. I don't see Reverend McCourt here, so why don't we stand, have a moment of silence, and think about all the things that we have blessings for and what we want to accomplish for the day and for the years ahead of us. So, we'll have a moment of silence and just our own personal thoughts. All right, we're now on item number, oh, there he is. Good, okay. The man. We're on item number five, public comment. This is a time for anybody who wants to comment now. We have comment at the beginning, and the end, and during most agenda items. Come on up. Good morning. How we doing?
Compared to what?
I have a question.
Uh-oh. I'm in trouble already.
No, you're in trouble already. Push the red button on the front there where your right hand is. There you go.
Oh, okay, got it. My name's Don Leonard, Carson City. Good. A question about a problem that we're seeing. A couple of years ago, I didn't have deer bothering me. They've moved in, they've pretty well eaten a lot of my shrubs, destroyed an apple tree. Saturday, I had 14 deer in my little backyard. And, you know, either we have to get more coyotes here, or someone's got to get rid of these darned deer. Anyway, that's it. Deer problem.
Well, it's a problem, and I think we, you know, everybody's read about it in the paper, but I think the message is, don't feed the deers. And even though they look very kind and loving, they can really be dangerous animals if you're not careful with them.
Well, and I can't throw a rock very far anymore, but 14 deer in this little backyard has just gotten to be a real, real problem for us. Thank you.
Don, I think you're absolutely right, and I don't know who's got the answer to that, but I've heard several answers, and I'm not certain about any of them, but I do know that it is an issue. And, you know, it was brought home that, you know, it's not just an issue of the deer, but the more they get ingrained in the community here, the more the predators come down here, like bobcats, mountain lions, and bear. But, mountain lions, you know, so it's, they look nice, kind of cute to have, but there's an issue that's going on there, so thanks.
Well, I'm an ex-Montana hunter. I know what to do with them. Also, just, I read in the paper the other day, it hasn't bothered us yet up in Silver Oak, but I see horses are now invading East Carson also, so there's another problem out there. Thank you very much.
All right, Don, thank you very much. Okay. Other public comment? Anybody? I don't see any. Okay, let's move to item number six, possible approval of the minutes of January 7th, 2016. Everybody had a chance to look at them? Everybody okay? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the minutes of January 7th, 2016, as presented.
Motion, and a couple seconds on the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried unanimously. Mr. City Manager, under item seven, adoption of the agenda, any changes?
No change.
Board members, if you want any changes? Okay, unless there's an objection, then we will take the agenda as posted. Let's now move to a special part of our day today, item number eight, and welcome one of Carson City's finest, one of our native sons, great lawyer, great congressman, Congressman Mark Amade. Good morning, Mark.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Is this okay for you to sit there?
Yes.
Do you want to stand, or anything? You want to come up here and give your presentation? I'll give you my seat.
No, that's okay, Your Honor. I will say it's nice to see you here at work at High. Instead of kissing babies and shaking hands in Mobile, Alabama, the home of Mardi Gras, would you please pass on to the First Lady of Carson City, that I am proud of the job she did there at that function? Great job on her talk, didn't leave people wondering how long it was, broke the champagne bottle on the first try, so it was a great day for the home of the senators all around.
It was a great day to have you there, let me tell you. I mean, that was exciting, and, you know, Mark, it just brought home what a great community we've got to have our congressman there, you know, to celebrate, and I know how big of a deal it is to you, because I know you've got Navy in your family, and it was great.
For an Army guy, it wasn't anywhere near as hard as I thought it was going to be. I'm getting ready to be salty almost, or something like that. But anyhow, for your record, Your Honor, Mark Amade, representing Congressional District Two, which obviously Carson is a part of, my intent in asking for a little time on your agenda today was just to kind of check in with you, see what was on your mind, let you know what we've been doing, what's going on, and also repeat the mantra that we kind of work by, which is, use us as a resource if there's something federal agency-related, or in any way related federally, whether it's the district office in BLM here, the Carson Ranger District Office, FEMA, you've got some flood map stuff going on right now, stuff that affects the hospital, even though you're not the hospital board, obviously it's fabric of the community stuff, as far as audits from CMS and stuff like that, those are all things that are on our radar screen right now. I want to point out just a couple of things that are in process, and actually, on one of them, ask for your help. We have a bill that passed the House that was actually inspired by folks that worked for the Forest Service, and it was the sale of small tracts along the eastern front of the Sierras, obviously in Carson City, but also to the south in Douglas and to the north in Washoe. These tracts are all 40 acres or less, they're interspersed with private ownership, they're difficult to manage as part of our forest lands, because, quite frankly, because of the profiles and the sizes, they're not part of them. And so, it's one of those rare instances these days where actually the administration supports it. Obviously, the House passed it on its suspension calendar, which means you need a two-thirds vote in order to get it out of there without going through all the formal processes. It's over in the Senate where nobody opposes it, and I know they've got something new on their plate there, something to do with a court or something like that, but it's one of those things where it's not, it wasn't as a result of, because I think I'm three days past my 53-month anniversary in this job, but who's counting? It's one of those things that's been going on for a while, so it's not something where somebody can make a commercial out of it, it's not violence and sex on TV that a lot of people are going to watch, or political debates, if that's your flavor. It's just kind of a housekeeping thing that needs to be taken care of, so that the Forest Service has authorization to sell those in a publicly transparent process, those properties can be put on the tax rolls, and then come under the jurisdiction of, for instance, in Carson City, this Board for Planning and Zoning Matters, so you folks can go forward and manage your property tax base in any manner you see fit. Long story short, please feel free to correspond with your representatives on the north end of the building back there, in the building with the big white dome, and say, hey, if there's any way we can get this going, it's suspension material. As I said, it's one of those things where you go, how come we can't get a bill passed that nobody's against? So, we'll be happy to provide that information to you if you need it, but I'm sure you have it, but in any event, anything we can do to help. I want to draw your attention to one other thing specifically, because a few months ago, there was a group of people in the House that was bipartisan that did what they call a discharge petition on the Export-Import Bank. And you say, why are you telling me about that? That bank loans money to borrowers, overseas borrowers, that buy products that are manufactured in the U.S. It is a tool that 60 other countries have, and all of our major trading partners and competitors. And you say, well, what's a discharge petition? Have nothing but respect for Jeb Henshawling, who's the chairman of the Financial Services Committee, but there was a big row in terms of its welfare for Boeing and Caterpillar and blah, 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 blah. We did our homework on it, no disrespect to the folks who opposed it, but it's one of those things where it's not welfare if, when you get done at the end of the day, the XM Bank returns money to the U.S. Treasury. It's not welfare when their loan portfolio is a quarter of 1% of bad loans. So, you can imagine, they're making money, which means that we're not subsidizing them, we're not taking money away from emergency services stuff for communities and stuff like that, they pay all their bills, they do all their stuff, they manage their loan portfolio, 1/4 of 1% is the default rate, they cover those, and they return money to the U.S. Treasury. Now, that's the big-picture view. Now, let's come down to Nevada and even Carson City. You've got some folks out in the airport who obviously aren't Boeing or Caterpillar, but they make stuff that Boeing uses and Caterpillar uses, and those folks compete in that international market. Clickbond is one of the folks that comes to mind. So, you're thinking, well, there's some jobs here at stake, and that's an important thing when you're talking about policy, but then, in the course of our homework, there was another thing that, quite frankly, I wasn't aware of, it's a huge thing for agricultural producers. So, when you talk about milk folks out in Fallon, or the alfalfa folks all over the state that do those things called pellets, or the cow-calf folks, or any of that other sort of thing, so its impact in terms of Nevada businesses, private sector businesses and their jobs, was significant. One final piece that influenced us, so you go to the banks around and say, hey, are these guys competing with you? Is this making it tough for you? It's like, actually, the FDIC regs are such, and the Federal Reserve regs, where our standard run-of-the-mill NA banks aren't supposed to loan to overseas people, and so we're not cutting them out of business that they could be doing and earning here and paying whatever they're supposed to here. So, I'm not saying therefore I'm right, and everybody who disagrees with me wrong, I mean, there's plenty of people that disagree, but if it comes up, so you know, it's like, hey, we thought about it, we did our homework, here are the things on the record that influenced us in terms of supporting, and the vote was to reauthorize the charter of this institution so it could continue to operate. No appropriations with it or anything else like that, but it's one of those examples where it's like, hey, when all else fails, do your homework, see where you think the vote ought to go, and so that's what we did in that instance. The reason I'm telling you about is because it had some direct impacts on manufacturers here in Carson City. I mentioned the floodplain before, emergency management is something that we always try to stay on top of. There's some controversy at the moment between some people in a small city east of here called New York and the administration regarding some potential cuts in emergency management stuff. As always, we'll look at the specific budget proposals, the President has submitted his budget in years past in a historical sense, that hasn't ended up passing, it's usually a blend of something, or sausage, or whatever expletive you might want to describe it as, but anyhow, we'll go through that process with an eye toward it. To that end, we're going to have Congressman Lou Barletta, who chairs the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee that deals directly with emergency management, cyber stuff, and everything else, is going to be in Carson, meeting with League of Cities folks, NACO folks, some of the utility people, Caleb Cage from the governor's staff, to talk about how responsive FEMA has been in a preparedness sense for those cyber issues. So, we'll be meeting in Carson a week from tomorrow with him, informal meeting, not a formal congressional hearing or that sort of thing, but he was going to be in the neighborhood, so we made him available to these folks. If the city wants to send somebody specifically, they're more than welcome, we'll get you the details of where and when that is. Two final things. We've been active on behalf of the hospital in terms of CMS, the CMS folks in terms of Medicare reimbursement and how they audit things like that, because, quite frankly, some days you look at the audit process and go, wow, why is anybody in the medical business as a provider? So, that's an ongoing thing, it has impacts just not only in terms of Carson Tahoe, but for hospitals all over the state, even the real big ones, and even the smaller ones out in the Winnebagoes, the Fallons, and the Elkoos. So, we'll stay on top of that, working mainly through the Hospital Association, but obviously, Carson Tahoe is not different than most of the hospitals, so we'll continue to concentrate on that. Final thing, before I do my best with any questions you might have, the congressional calendar this year, there's good news and there's bad news. When I was in the legislature, people used to say, oh, thank goodness they're not in session, they can't do anything to us, and they're in session, you need to watch them. Well, this year, because it's a presidential election year, and you've got the two nominating conventions in July in Cleveland and in Philadelphia, the Congress is going to adjourn about, not adjourn, but go into recess, about July 15th. Everybody's going to go to their respective tribal meetings and do that sort of stuff. You have the August recess, which you always have, because Washington, D.C. is such a wonderful place to be in August, and then you come back, we're going to be in session in September, October, because it's election year, you've got the whole House of Representatives running, a third of the Senate, so October, out of session, and then after the election, you've got the holidays. So, when you look at the calendar, which is available on, I think, majortyleader.gov, you'll see that there are about 30 days from July 15th to December 31st scheduled to be in session, 23 nights if you're somebody who rents and doesn't own where you sleep at night. So, I say that with a couple of things in mind, and that is, that can change, although historically it hasn't changed much, anything that needs to be done in terms of, we do oversight all day, every day, so that'll continue whether we're in session or not in terms of talking to BLM, talking to CMS, talking to whoever, but in terms of legislative stuff, for you and your staff, if you're tracking things and wondering about whatever, we are operating on the premise that we want to be done with all of our stuff June 15th, so that we have a little bit of emergency management time, if you will, but anyhow, forewarned is forearmed in terms of how that works. Not that that organization is famous for doing anything quickly, but just so you have that in the back of your mind, you say, well, what's the good news in all that? Well, maybe bad news for you guys, is I get to spend a lot more time working in Nevada the last half of the year than usual, and obviously, I'm happy about that, so with that, Your Honor, if there are any questions from any of the supervisors yourself, I'd be happy to try to respond.
We've got some up here, Mark, so, or you go.
So, Congressman, can you give us an update a little more specifically on the flood maps? Because I'm getting a lot of calls from constituents that live in the areas that are awaiting the map updates. So, are we six months out, a year out?
We're in the 90-day, we're in the 90-day comment period, so I expect that they will come out with their revisions after the comment. I'm not sure where we are in it, but we're not at the beginning of it, so I would assume somewhere between 30 and 60 days out from when they do that. Now, let me make sure you understand, we have contacted FEMA and said, we want to know, because we went through this drill with the folks in Douglas County last year, and years previous were, you actually had litigation, which, as a matter of fact, Douglas County won, God bless America, or somebody. So anyhow, our role, we take an oversight role in terms of, if there's a problem, then what we do is we go to them, we say, what was the basis for this? How did you decide this? Did you comply with your applicable regulations? Did you follow your procedures? Was there an opportunity for public comment? What's the science behind where you, you know, drew the line? I won't say where you colored with the crayons, like your colleagues to the south have said, and turns out correctly so. So anyhow, it's one of those things where if there's a concern, even now, before that comes out, the more time we have to get with them, because, quite frankly, I'm not a money guy, but the reason to be on appropriations is, when you have authority over their budget, and you ask them to come in and brief you on something, they tend to show up. So, if there's work we need to do, whether it's a specific instance or a general instance, let us know.
So, I should have somebody contact your office if they want some specific help?
Yep, absolutely. If they're not responding to you, or you're like, hey, you know, I don't think that, it's like, we can shake those trees. Part of the job, not a favor.
There is one significant difference between what happened with Douglas County and FEMA and the current process, and that's, it was a cooperative process between FEMA and Carson with the Carson map, so everybody was at the table to come to the final maps that were submitted, so we're not really anticipating any issues with getting those approved, because everybody's already tentatively approved those.
And thank you, Supervisor Bonkowski. I'm sure that the mayor's house and my house are still in some floodplain for which, I don't have any federally subsidized flood insurance, so contractors of Carson City, if we have a flood there, please feel free to call me and we'll get to it.
We circled the house, Mark. We circled it. We made sure we kept it.
Yeah, that's right. Good.
Anybody else? Well, Congressman, we couldn't be more thankful for you coming down to spend some of your time here, and we couldn't be more proud of one of our own coming, you know, doing such great things for us back in Congress. I mean, you know, you're always there, always available, you have a great way of presenting things, and we just want to thank you. I'd like to ask the board if we could all come down and have a group picture with you, and then we'll just stay down there for the presentation. Is that okay with you?
It's the board's reputation. If you want to ruin them like that, it's fine with me, Your Honor.
We're going to do it, okay. So anyhow, it's one of those things where if there's a concern, even now, before that comes out, the more time we have to get with them, because, quite frankly, I'm not a money guy, but the reason to be on appropriations is, when you have authority over their budget, and you ask them to come in and brief you on something, they tend to show up. So, if there's work we need to do, whether it's a specific instance or a general instance, let us know.
So, I should have somebody contact your office if they want some specific help?
Yep, absolutely. If they're not responding to you, or you're like, hey, you know, I don't think that, it's like, we can shake those trees. Part of the job, not a favor.
There is one significant difference between what happened with Douglas County and FEMA and the current process, and that's, it was a cooperative process between FEMA and Carson with the Carson map, so everybody was at the table to come to the final maps that were submitted, so we're not really anticipating any issues with getting those approved, because everybody's already tentatively approved those.
And thank you, Supervisor Bonkowski. I'm sure that the mayor's house and my house are still in some floodplain for which, I don't have any federally subsidized flood insurance, so contractors of Carson City, if we have a flood there, please feel free to call me and we'll get to it.
We circled the house, Mark. We circled it. We made sure we kept it.
Yeah, that's right. Good.
Anybody else? Well, Congressman, we couldn't be more thankful for you coming down to spend some of your time here, and we couldn't be more proud of one of our own coming, you know, doing such great things for us back in Congress. I mean, you know, you're always there, always available, you have a great way of presenting things, and we just want to thank you. I'd like to ask the board if we could all come down and have a group picture with you, and then we'll just stay down there for the presentation. Is that okay with you?
It's the board's reputation. If you want to ruin them like that, it's fine with me, Your Honor.
We're going to do it, okay. We're now going to move on to another special part of our agenda, and that is the longevity awards for our employees, and we have one to give today, and I'd like to have Deborah Marzalene come on up, please. Deborah, why don't you, Deborah, this is in recognition of, an appreciation for five years of continuous dedicated service to Carson City, and I want to thank you on behalf of all of us. How many of you know what Deborah does? She's the public guardian, and takes care of roughly 80-plus wards who need help, who have no other means of help in our community. It's a growing need, and she does a great job. So, on behalf of a grateful community, let it, give the certificate for five years of service, and I'd like you to come on up here and get a picture taken with us, too.
Okay, so again, we kind of changed our tradition, we have somebody else who's retiring, and I just think that they should come before the board and the city, especially for folks who have spent the last 25-plus years protecting the citizens of Carson City. Today, we have Rod Temple and his family back there, so Rod, come on up. Tina, you can come up here, too. So, one of the things is, as a, and he's a firefighter, paramedic,'s been here for the last 25 years, did a little bit of a stint at Lake Tahoe, up at the lake, working and came back to us, and you think about it, you know, we run thousands of calls a year, so these guys have had impacts on thousands of folks within Carson City, and I think it's appropriate that the board presents them with their final thank you for the service that they've done and committed for Carson City. So with that, I'll let the mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning. This is a certificate presented to firefighter, paramedic Rod Temple in recognition of 25 years of dedicated service to the Carson City Fire Department and the community of Carson City. And while I present this to you, I want to relate a little cute little story. Yesterday, I spoke to the kindergarten class over at Mark Twain, and, you know, they're five and six-year-olds, and you'd be surprised at how many want to be firemen, firefighters. So, you know, congratulations, it's because of your work that these things happen, we have a great community, and so, on behalf of a grateful community, let us present this certificate to you for 25 years, and shall we give it to you or your wife? Okay. Here you go. Come on up, have a few words.
I don't have any words.
Yeah, you do.
Well, thank you, board. Thank you, chief. Thank you to everyone, city manager. It's been a pleasure to work for the Carson City Fire Department in Carson City. I've worked along some very wonderful, tremendous coworkers and staff, I'm very grateful, it's been a very good career. Thank you very much, thanks for being here. Thank you, chief.
All right. Come on up, Tom. Yeah. Chief, too, come on, Tom. Okay, we're going to recess as the Board of Supervisors, and we're going to convene as Liquor and Entertainment Board. Ken Sandage is here, the sheriff furlong is out of town, we have the assistant sheriff here, Ken Sandage. Morning, Ken. Welcome to Liquor and Entertainment Board. I think we're okay, so, okay, we'll just say we're... So, okay, we'll just say we're, we've got everybody here. Well, now on item number eleven, public comment on the liquor and entertainment board issues. Anybody? I don't see any, so let's take up item thirteen A. Lena, you want to, Jose Escobar?
Twelve.
Oh, twelve. Minutes, I'm sorry. Thank you. Minutes are January seventh. Motion's in order.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Liquor and Entertainment Board for January seventh, 2016, as presented.
Motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Now we'll move on to Mr. Escobar, thirteen A here. Okay.
This item is for possible action to approve Jose Escobar as the Liquor Manager for Los Antoneca Liquor License Number sixteen dash three-one-two-one-five, located at three sixteen East Winnie Lane. He is applying for a beer and wine-only liquor license. He has been in business operating, and now he's just adding the liquor to his establishment. Staff is recommending approval.
Mr. Escobar, why don't you come on, come on up. You want to take a minute and tell us what's going on and talk about your business? Just give us a promotion?
Yeah, you know, I've been very happy to have, to have the business. I've been for last eleven months, and, you know, I decided to do this, you know, because I would like to have more employees with me.
Staff recommending approval. Motion's in order. Supervisor, about.
I move to approve Jose Escobar as the Liquor Manager for Los Antoneca Liquor License Number sixteen dash three-one-two-one-five, located at three sixteen East Winnie Lane.
Motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thanks, Jose. Go, go do good work.
Thank you.
Don't sell to minors.
Thank you.
All right, all right. Let's take up thirteen Bravo, Juan Ria Mariscal. Nationals Cafe. Good morning.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Lena, you want to, while he's come up here, take a seat.
This item is for possible action to approve Juan Ria Mariscal as the Liquor Manager for Nationals Cafe Liquor License Number sixteen dash three-one-two-three-three, located at seventeen oh one North Carson Street. He is also applying for a beer and wine-only liquor license, and staff is recommending approval.
Any questions of Juan? Haven't been in there for a while, so why don't you tell us what's going on there and give us a little update on your business? How you doing?
I'm good. I've been in business for eleven years, same place. First time I applied for a liquor license. I want to know, get more, you know, more customer and get some more employees to help. That's why I want to apply, and I want to see you guys give me any rules to approve my license.
Okay, questions? Motion? Want to do a motion? Supervisor Bunkowski.
I move to approve Juan Ria Mariscal as the Liquor Manager for Nationals Cafe Liquor License sixteen dash three-one-two-three-three, located at seventeen oh one North Carson Street.
Motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thank you. Go do some good work, you guys. Okay, all right. Concluding public comment on Liquor and Entertainment Board matters? Anybody? I don't see any, so unless there's an objection, we will adjourn as Liquor and Entertainment Board and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, and like to thank you, Ken Sandage, for stepping in and good job.
Good work.
Good work, Ken. You always do fine work, man. You're quick. Looking pretty sharp today, too, man. That's what the cops most look like, that's good. All right. All right. Now we're going to do an update. We'll take up item seventeen. We'll reconvene as a board. Update on Western Nevada Development District. Mr. Saloga, you going to do this?
Yes, I am sure.
Okay.
Let's get, you get a PowerPoint.
All right, take your time.
Good morning. I'm Ron Reddell, Western Nevada Development. And I'm here today to give you an update on some of the activities, programs that we're working with, and some background on the district for those who may not be too familiar. It started out in nineteen eighty-three with four counties, which were Carson, Lyon, Douglas, and Story, and since that time, it's grown to nine counties. We brought in additional counties and cities as members. We are certified by the U.S. Economic Development Administration as an economic development district. We are the only one in Nevada, and have been the only one for quite some time. We are governed by our Board of Directors, and the board is comprised of primarily local elected officials, with some private sector representation. For Carson, Supervisor Bagwell is the supervisor that's been appointing to our board, coming to the meetings. And then Michael Saloga has been staff representation to the board, and Michael's been also involved with our revolving loan fund review committee. So we've got some great help, assistance from the city. If we go to the next slide, I'll give you some idea of some of previous projects that have been done. When the district was originally formed, it worked primarily with cities and counties to secure EDA money for public infrastructure for publicly-owned industrial parks. There was one, at least one project that I'm aware of that was done in Carson, out on Arrowhead, probably for water and sewer at that time, and that may have been back sometime in the middle to late eighties, I believe, is when that particular project was done. So we've done quite a few of those throughout the region. We're working right now on one with Douglas County, and the, you'll see where we've made kind of a little bit of a change in some of our projects that we've been working on. The one that I like to always talk about is the VNT Economic Feasibility Study that was done back in, started in ninety-two, completed in nineteen ninety-four, I think was revised in two thousand or two thousand and one, and then construction started in two thousand and two. And the engineer's always been very fond of telling me that it took ten years or better from the time the feasibility study was completed till actual construction. That's ten years. Then he says, then when they build it, they actually build it in ten months. But they didn't have quite the regulatory issues, I guess, to deal with back then either. The other thing that is of a regional nature is the Lake Tahoe Basin Prosperity Plan. It was completed in two thousand and ten. Douglas, Carson, Guacho contributed some funding for the match for that project, and El Dorado and Placer Counties of California also contributed match, because that study focus was based on the Tahoe Basin. And, you know, it's kind of a by-state effort. Spinoff that came out of that is the Tahoe Prosperity Center, which is five oh one C three now, and that's continuing, looking at and dealing with issues in the basin. Stronger Economies Together Program was done in twenty twelve. That led to the development of our comprehensive economic development strategy. Business Micro Loan Program, it's a small one at this point. We started out using USDA money as well as CDBG funds. We've got five loans across the region. They've, anywhere ranging from five to, I think, thirty-five or thirty-eight thousand. So they have been, you know, on the smaller side. We're looking to expand that program in the future. We do have repayments coming back in, and that we can use either for additional loans or we can use those funds to try and access other money. Principally, we're looking at the SBA Micro Loan, Micro Lending Program. This slide will give you an idea of the goals that are in the comprehensive economic development strategy. This all came out of that Stronger Economies Together process that we did. We had meetings with over two hundred participants from the public and private sector in twenty twelve, came up and developed these goals, and then those were incorporated, as I said, into our comprehensive economic development strategy. If I tend to talk in acronym, you may interrupt for definitions. Want to focus a little bit on the SEDs right now.
Let me ask you a question, and I, and the board members can jump in. On the handout part of it, there is a project that was awarded for USDA RD Nevada Project, awarded funding due to seed. What project was that?
Okay, are you, are you on page six?
Thirty. I'm on our agenda page thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's your page. Maybe I'm ahead of you here, but you might hit it, and I'll catch it when you get to the page. Don't worry about it.
Yeah, okay.
It's the next slide, the next one. Just rolls.
That one, the second one, it's bullet point up there. Which, what, which one is that? What project is that?
We're talking about the, how USDA used our SEDs. That was for a business and industry loan application that was prepared up at Douglas Now, what you're seeing now is, is how this, the twenty fourteen Farm Bill impacted USDA rural development money, or rural development programs, because one of the things they're asking for in the USDA programs at this point is whether or not your application is part of a multi-jurisdictional plan or is part of any other kind of a planning process. That's a new, a fairly new requirement, that whenever you do a grant application, anybody that's writing grant applications, you're going to have probably a section that's going to ask whether or not this project is part of a planning process, has it been planned for? And so you can, you can score points that way. With the USDA, you can score additional points. But that's where the importance, I think, of the SEDs now becomes, becomes apparent, because even though this is a USDA requirement, you can still use those SEDs citations in grant applications for any public or private sector application. It always helps to show in that application that this is a project that has been planned for, and it's not something you just decided to do. So, in fact, I was at a local EDA office yesterday, and one of their people that's working on a grant application had a copy of our SEDs, and he had orange and yellow and green and blue stickers all over that thing, because he was looking for specific pieces in there that would reflect something back to his project application or how he could use those citations for the, for the proposed plans and the projects and initiatives. It's a multipurpose document, and we're going to be doing an update. I'm going to be getting an email out here probably next week, but that'll probably initially, the update initially will go to Michael's staff to kind of get started on that. And once those are done, then they need to come back here to the board for approval of inclusion of that update into our updated SEDs.
And just so you know, and again, Michael Saloga, for the record, when I get that email, then I work very closely with Lee and with Darren in Public Works, because what we're going to do is we're going to add, change, delete to our list of projects that is part of the SEDs, and that's what the major update is all about. So we're working very closely with those guys.
We've got some basic things that we've done in the past, some community assessment planning with the Stronger Economies Together, the SEDs in particular, the Micro Loan Program we've talked about. We do, we'll work with and provide technical assistance on grant writing for those that ask for it. And then on the training side, there's those Next Level classes. Are you familiar with Next Level, that the SBDC out of Reno does? There are these thirteen-week business courses, and you go in and you start out, you end up with your business plan, basically. Four of our five borrowers on the Micro Loan Program have, had completed the Next Level classes. So we, I think, were maybe a little bit more comfortable in working with them to approve a loan, because they had gone through that process and they had a better understanding, we think, of how to start up and how to operate a business. The Economic Development Conference is coming up in September twenty sixteen. That will be at the Joe Crowley Student Union, and this will be the second year that we've done this. We've got a Steering and Planning Committee that's from across the state, Elko, Las Vegas, Henderson, people throughout the region here. And there were, we're planning at least one pre-conference will be with Fred Steinman, who does the Leadership Institutes. He does a one-day session on economic, or fundamentals of economic development, which is sometimes intense, but it's very, very good, particularly for, I think, for elected officials. Gives you a good idea of, you know, requirements and how you go about economic development within the, within the state, as well as the public. And then the other one we're looking at will be with NDEP on brownfields. We don't quite have that one finalized, but we'll be working on it. Do some tours, the ever-popular TRI tour. We're going to have some agro, hydroponic farms, sterling farms up in Reno. Electrotherm in Reno will be another tour, so this will be of people an idea of kind of what's going on in the region. We are going to have Robert Lang from UNLV and the Brookings come in and talk about the metropolitan region, which is, he's defined as being from the Bay to Reno, but I think it's going to go beyond, a little bit beyond Reno by the, in the, in the near future, to show how those economic ties are right now and how they may be enhanced in the future. We do have a VP from Tesla to come in and talk about the Tesla Panasonic Gigafactory. And we'll have the ever-knowledgeable Dr. Tom Harris come in and give us some economic indicators update. So it's going to be a two-day conference. It's, the planning has gone really well, and we had frankly wonderful reviews last year, except we had two criticisms. Too many, too many sessions, and we didn't have coffee, or we didn't have donuts in the morning. So based on our review and evaluation, we will have donuts and coffee in the morning, and we have cut our sessions down a little bit, so. Benefits of the district. I've been doing this kind of work for a long time, and again, coming back to the composition of our board, being locally elected officials primarily, that's, you're the front line, the front group in economic development, because we can have all these projects and all these plans going on, and when it comes down to putting in the infrastructure, who gets to operate, maintain, own, and replace it? You. So that's why I've always thought and I've always felt that local governments really need to be involved and should be involved in economic development. I'm going to leave you with a, with a final thought here. At our board meeting last week, our board president was talking about how he had access to a map that showed a fifty-mile radius around TRI. And within that fifty-mile radius, you have Fernley, you have Fallon, you've got Lyon County, you've got Story County, you've got Guachill, Reno, Sparks, Carson, Virginia City, a number of entities going. of entities going even down into Douglas. But he stated that he finally realized or came to the conclusion that based on looking at that map, you know, what's going on in the region now with all the, you know, the development, part of its TRI, part of its other places. He said, "We all, as local governments, we all have to work together to address these impacts" because everyone knows that those impacts are not going to recognize or stop at a city or county boundary. So, any questions you may have, comments?
Jim, go.
I'd like to, if you could, back up to, my page is 28, I don't know what your slide projection is, but the regional economic sector goals.
Yes.
If you could briefly kind of outline what we're trying to, what you're trying to accomplish in those five fields, energy, manufacturing, tourism, if you could elaborate on those?
Okay. Agribusiness, for example, one of the things that's, that has come out of that is we are working with Fred Steinman to prepare a regulatory food map. And he's looking at what the requirements are for somebody who's a small producer to sell some, to sell an agricultural product at a farmer's market, for example, or if they want to do it retail or if they want to sell a processed product like jams or jellies, that kind of thing. What are the local requirements for them to get a permit to be able to conduct business? And that should be done and completed first part of April. And when that's done, then we'll get it up on our website and people will be able to access that kind of information there. The agribusiness work group did work with legislature two years ago to get the bill through that allowed wineries in Washoe County. So, they've done some of that, some of that kind of work. As part of our conference, we always have the agribusiness sector as part of that and this year, one of the new things we're having is called AgriHoods, where housing development, where instead of having a commons area, you might have a community garden or food production area, that kind of thing. In the area of energy, again, that's primarily, again, I think tied back to the conference in trying to make people more aware. What we're planning is a session on the future of energy in Nevada at that conference and we hope to have a number of different people presenting viewpoints or positions and meaning of consideration, that kind of thing, on what you should be doing with energy. Manufacturing, there are a number of different groups that are involved in manufacturing type activities, you know, the community colleges in the region do that with their training programs. You have NVIE out of UNR that works directly with the manufacturers and then NDAA also has a manufacturers group. So, we try to maintain contact with them and, and see what's going on in that area. And then, again, back to the board and the board composition, with Dean Haymore from Story County, the building official being on our board, he's been able to provide other board members with information about how they do permitting, permitting and that up there is primarily for distribution and for manufacturing. Then in tourism, probably haven't done much in tourism, I'll be honest with you, because there seems to be enough of that going on with the State Office of Tourism and then you've got the local, you know, visitors bureaus and those kinds of things. So, trying to keep a handle on who's on first in economic development, community development is an, an interesting process. So, if we get questions, we try to refer people to where they, where they need to be going. Transportation and logistics, one of the things, the issues that's starting to come up with our board, the WNDD board, is the entire I-11 proposal. So, we will be discussing that. And again, that kind of comes back to what Ed Lawson said last week at the board. There are these regional issues and we need to be looking at them kind of at that level and getting the communication between the various jurisdictions.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any questions?
Just a comment.
Comments and articles.
I just want to comment that the forum will be on September 20 through the 22nd. So, if you want to set your calendars to come to the forum and conference, I think we'll learn a lot that would be beneficial. I think we're doing a pretty good job putting that conference together, so I'd like to just.
That was when again?
September 20 through the 22nd.
Thank you. I forgot to tell the date.
Plug in there.
Good plug. Okay, anybody else?
Where will, where will it be at, Lori?
Joe Crowley, UNR.
Share the information.
Share it, send, good, okay. Anybody else on the board? Public comment, anybody? Anything? Michael? Any?
No, I, the only thing I'll say is, is that it's, the, the regional focus that WNDD takes is something that is critical to all of our efforts region-wide and it's very important for us to continue to keep that region-wide focus. And this is one of those organizations that allows us to tap into all the different activities that are going on around the region.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, anybody else? Thank you, Ron.
All right, thank you.
Good to have you back. All right. All right, let's take up the now change to, from Nevada Works, we're going to now make it the, what's it going to be called now? Go to 17B, the Cooperative Agreement for Creation of Nevada Works. Michael, you going to do that?
Right, I'm going to do this again. Michael Saloga for the record. Let me get another PowerPoint up real quick. This item is for possible action. This is discussion and possible approval of the Cooperative Agreement for the Creation of Nevada Works. We have today a couple of folks, John Thurman, who's the Executive Director of Nevada Works, as well as interested party, Al, Mr. Al Kramer. Basically, this item, the reason why this is in front of you is because there has been an update at the federal level from the Workforce Investment Act to the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. We smile at each other because we kind of go back and forth with this a little bit sometimes, making sure we got the right acronym. And for, for background purposes for the board, Supervisor Aboud is the primary representative on the Nevada Works Board and I am the alternate member on that board, so, of which they actually have two. One is a general board and the other is for local elected officials. So, John, I'll let you get started. In the meantime, I'm going to get this PowerPoint started.
Good morning, John. Good morning, Al. How you doing this morning?
I'm doing fine, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did you come, where did you come down from Reno?
I did.
How was the road?
It was littered with accidents, yes.
Hopefully, one of them wasn't our DA. It was just the DA.
I, I didn't take names on the way, so I don't know.
All right, good morning, Al. How you doing?
Morning, Mayor.
Okay, all right, go, John.
Actually, I think Mr. Kramer would like to make a few comments and then I just have a brief little bit before we get to.
Always ready to hear comments from Mr. Kramer. Shoot.
Thank you. Al Kramer, concerned citizen, let's say. I spent eight years on the Nevada Works Board and most people, if you asked them what Nevada Works was or what they did, would have no clue. Karen, you're on it now. Mike, you go to the meetings, you got an idea of what's going on. Nevada Works coordinates workforce development in northern Nevada, provides unique empowering labor statistics and goes beyond coordination to provide funding for for-profit, nonprofit and government entities that provide workforce development services for job seekers and the employers. That's, that's kind of a mission statement type thing, but it kind of tells you it's, it's all of northern Nevada we're working for and it doesn't just pick, it's not a picking winners and losers. What you have is you have people coming forward and saying, "We have an idea, we'd like to get this funded." And Nevada Works ends up with money from the Department of Labor coming through Dieter at the state level and they, and they set priorities as to where they, the local elected officials in this board set the priorities where they want to go and they choose providers of that training, whether it's in the three main areas of medical logistics or manufacturing to train people. And for example, last year Carson got training of, of what, almost a half a million dollars to train almost 800 people in, in welding and such things at mostly community college but other areas. So, it's a direct impact and, and it helps us prepare people for the jobs that are needed today and tomorrow. So, I, I'm going to say, not many people know about it, it's a good tool to be used and, and it needs to be, it needs to be used more. You need to know more about it. They, they not only do the RFPs, but they enforce that those RFPs are, are done right and people don't spend money on the wrong things when they get an RFP for the training of these people. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Supervisors. Just a brief, between Michael and, and Al, I don't know that I have a lot to add at this point, but just want to give you a little bit of idea who Nevada Works is and why I'm before you today asking for an update on this cooperative agreement between the 13 counties for the creation of Nevada Works. And are you flipping sides for me? Okay. Okay, so, again, importantly, this is nothing more than an update, this is a document that was originally signed back in 1999 as a result of the Workforce Investment Act, which was signed into law in 1998. And it is an agreement between the 13 counties which creates us, myself and other staff, to then go about the things that Michael and Al have said about, for providing workforce development services to individuals as well as employers in those counties of northern Nevada. The next one, and you probably, it'll come up, you went a couple, so, okay. So, the original act that I mentioned was signed into law in 1998. It was a five-year law, it expired in 2003 and we continued under continuing resolution from the Congress up until 2014, when they signed the new act into law, which is the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Some key elements in there, the main structure for the delivery of services remains a one-stop system. I would like to describe that one-stop system as nothing more than a no-wrong-door approach for an individual or a company. So, no matter how they touch the system or where they touch the system, they either directly get the services they're looking for, are referred to and with a direct handoff to the other agency that's most appropriate for the services that they are seeking. That's key in the old act, that is key in the new act. Also, one of the main purposes, especially at the individual level for job seekers, is to improve job retention and job earnings and that remains one of the focal points throughout the, the new act. One of the key items here is that the focus is on individuals who are either low-income or have barriers to employment. Now, that's for what we refer to as adult clients or youth clients. And also, there's a dislocated worker funding silo that we have funds in and that really deals with those people who have lost their job at no fault of their own, a layoff, a downsized, a rightsized, a restructuring of the company. Even if the, the company has gone offshore and people are left behind, it's services to help those individuals re-enter the workforce, improve their skills and employability and move on into self-sustaining employment. And the final point on here is that the governance of this remains the same. There's oversight from the Department of Labor, there's oversight from the state. Ultimately, the state has designated the Department of Employment Training and Rehabilitation as the entity within the state that oversees this and then it comes out to the local boards. There's two local boards in the state of Nevada, one in the north, which is Nevada Works, and one in the south, which is Workforce Connections. And Workforce Connection covers those other four counties of the state. So, with that, the kind of the structure overall, there's the, as Mr. Saloga mentioned, there's a Nevada Works Council, that's everybody who is not in the locally elected official, and then the Nevada Works locally elected officials. Those two bodies come together and make up the Nevada Works Board. Within both of those entities, there is an executive council and from each of those executive councils or committees, we comprise the Nevada Works Board should we need to take action in between regularly scheduled board meetings. And then finally, there's staff, that's myself and eight others, that work at Nevada Works that handle the paperwork, the oversight, the RFP process. When it comes to the actual selection, which I think is very key, the selection of who receives the funding is made up of members of our board, of the locally elected officials and also possibly members from the public who would have expertise in an area that we're looking to provide services in. So, it doesn't rely on staff for that, we just carry out the orders of the board, but we do rely on the locally elected officials and council members very heavily at that part to decide who is going to receive the funding. They have the local area knowledge and expertise to know what's needed in their areas and the services that should be provided in those areas. Finally, how does the money flow? Is all the, everything that we have is federal dollars that are managed by the Department of Labor. As I say, that comes out to the state of Nevada, then to the Department of Employment Training and Rehabilitation, and then finally to Nevada Works for the oversight of those, those funds. So, the reason we're here is that the new act, which supersedes the old act, created some language changes. So, most of what you see in the documents that were presented to you before, which was the original document, the redline document, and then finally the document for consideration and signature, is mostly a result of changing the wording from Workforce Investment Act to Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act and to also incorporate some language which is mandated by the act at the federal level into that document. And with that, I would entertain any questions.
We've got some questions up here, so if I say about, then so I can go.
Hi, John.
Hi.
For purposes of clarification for the board, you touched on the function of Dieter in this process, but how JOIN interfaces with Dieter in the process?
Okay, JOIN, which is the acronym for Job Opportunities in Nevada, which is a recipient of funding from Nevada Works. They receive funding from all three silos, the adult funding, the youth funding and also the dislocated worker funding. Not only do they have a large presence here in Carson City, but in many of the other counties throughout northern Nevada. So, in that picture of the one-stop system, they would represent Title I, Title I being the funding that we get at Nevada Works. So, they are a Title I service provider. The other mandated partners within the system, the four core ones are Department of Rehabilitation, Department of Adult Education, and then the Wagner-Piser Funds, which is the act back in 1933 that started the entire workforce services industry or sector, whatever, that we have in the United States. So, JOIN is a part of that one-stop system. They are a direct recipient of funding from Nevada Works and they work very, very closely with the Job Connects and other service providers in the other, in the area, whether it be welfare or, or whatever, to do the best they can for anybody that touches the system.
I just have more of a comment about Nevada Works and other workforce development agencies and that is that education is important across the board, but the most critical need in Nevada, especially northern Nevada today, is workforce development. And there's some significant differences between workforce development and the community college system, which is primarily where that's, that education is coming from, and the university system. Where the university system, you have people coming from out of state coming in and then they leave again. They're also getting an education that allows them to get jobs in other places. Workforce development imports jobs and it creates jobs for our residents locally in manufacturing, manufacturing. So, Nevada Works and everybody associated with workforce development is filling one of the most critical needs in the Nevada economy today, so kudos to you.
Thank you.
So, just in general, can you tell me how much dollars were allocated last year? How much money are we talking about that's utilized within the region?
Very specifically to the Carson area, it is just short of a half a million dollars that comes into the region from that. Overall, the state receives approximately 30 million, probably just a little less, between 27 and 30 million and it's been flat for the last few years. We do anticipate a slight increase statewide because of the act which authorizes funding up to the 2011, which had the ARA funding that came out of the Department of Labor, so that was a peak. So, it does authorize funding up to that level in the coming years, but it's up to the appropriators then to put that money into the budget and, and fund the system. So, statewide, again, So statewide, again, anywhere between $27 and $30 million. The formula, which is a formula prescribed out of the act on how the funds are distributed, the state holds back a certain percentage, which they are allowed to do for their own state activities. Then the remaining funds are distributed between the two boards, population being a big portion of that formula. There are other factors like areas of high unemployment, unemployment rate, and so on and so forth. So the bottom line is anywhere from 25% to 30% of the remaining dollars come to the north, and the rest of the 75% to 70% go to the southern four counties, yes.
Okay, and then are the awards that are given, are they one-year training grants, or do you actually issue multi-year?
Actually, they are a one-year with the option for renewal. They don't have a sunset clause in them. Typically, what creates that sunset is the change in the act, change in legislation, even changes in state policies that could require that we have to shut that contract down and then go out for RFP again, just to bring the contract in line with the requirements of the act or the state, state policies.
And then is it still about 15% for the disproportional share that's for the set-aside dislocated worker? Is that still about 15%?
Yeah, actually--
I used to distribute this.
There you go, okay. Yeah, somebody that knows a lot here.
I do.
Thank you. The, there was a period of time during ARA that they wanted to make sure that more money actually hit the street for services to individuals, so they restricted the state hold-back to 5%. The new act reinstated that back up to the 15%. So yes, the state does hold back the maximum 15%, and on the dislocated worker dollars that I was talking about, the state can hold back up to 25% because that also includes the rapid-response activities, which not only does the state participate in, but the Title I service providers that receive funding from us participate in those rapid-response activities as well.
Okay. And then just as one side note on page 40, the very last line, if we would correct the typo, it should say Brian Sandoval, designating--
Oh.
Spell it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go.
John, for purpose of taking off from Supervisor Bonkowski's comments, workforce development and our youth. The JAG program, the WAC program, Pioneer High School participates in that program, so if you'd just describe that just briefly.
Okay, the JAG program, which is Jobs for America's Graduates, it is, the governor actually sits on the National Board for that organization. It's in, I believe, 34 states nationwide. And it targets low-income, at-risk youth that are probably target, are being targeted for dropout and so on and so forth. And it's an intervention program to get them back engaged, on track with their credits, they're probably credit deficient, they, all kinds of things. The part that Nevada Works is funding in the 13 counties in northern Nevada is a work-experience component that is incorporated, oops, excuse me, into the JAG overall program. And what they're trying to do with that is get those youth that are in the program, and it's not all of them, but you know, those that are selected, to have them, have the opportunity to go out and participate in the work world, to learn what it means to have a job, what you need to do, why you're on the job, just day-to-day conversations, communications, making sure you dress appropriately, you show up on time, and so on and so forth. That's the key part that Nevada Works is funding, is the work experience. The JAG program overall does all kinds of things, and statewide, those youth that are participating within the JAG program right now are at a 92% graduation rate. Yes?
Anybody else on the board? John, are there any particular programs that you fund for veterans?
Yes, all of our service providers. One of the things that's in the act, was in the old act as well, is priority of services for veterans. So all veterans that touch the system, I have, I have to just explain briefly, there are veterans and there are veterans. There are those that are covered under the act, and there are also veterans who are not covered under the act, which is, without getting into all kinds of the weeds here on what that means, but the priority for those who are covered means they go to the front of the line essentially. And yeah, there's a strong, strong effort to make sure that the veterans are receiving the benefits and services that are available to them, we're getting them trained, and back into the communities and the workforce.
Okay. I don't know if it's applicable or not, I'm trying to decide whether it is. I think that Nevada Works, or WIOA, I guess is now it's going to be called, whatever that acronym is, it's kind of, it's a funding mechanism essentially for, to give out subgrants, right? It doesn't do Title I hands-on training or placement issues.
Nevada Works does not. The act prohibits us from being the service provider or the training provider. We are an administrative oversight body of that, that entire system.
Okay, all right. Answered my question, thanks.
One question.
You bet, John. Jim, go.
Could you elaborate, or maybe just let the general population know, how would they know about this? If we have children of this age or in high school, how would they know about this?
Yeah, it's, again, it's that one-stop system, which would have the title of America's Job Center, but in the state right now, that would look mostly like the Job Connect offices. That'll be a rebranding that's going to go on at some time in the future. But those organizations, and we'll use JOIN because they have a large presence right here in Carson City as an example, they do their own outreach, they're doing ads in the paper, they're doing, you know, flyers on doorsteps or whatever is necessary to get the word out to those individuals, and word-of-mouth is a huge part of it, so.
Do you work with the high schools?
That is very interesting, Supervisor. The act, under Workforce Investment Act, required that a minimum of 30% of the dollars be spent on out-of-school programs. The new act requires that 75% or more of the dollars be spent on out-of-school programs. One of the interesting things in the state of Nevada is, in order to be out of school, you need a designation as a dropout, and if you're under the age of 18, it's really hard to get that designation from the school system. So most of the funding under Nevada Works watch is going to out-of-school programs now. The JAG program is an in-school program across the state. I believe statewide, the JAG program is in 50 schools. That partners very well with the overall, what we do in in-school programs, so that's why we chose to partner with them. Did that answer your question at all? Okay.
Yesterday, the city manager and I were at a conference, or a little matter with the Green Zone Initiative for veterans, trying to marshal together all the veterans organizations that provide different levels of service for veterans. We were asked to bring someone else to the table, so our, my ask to you is, send out something to your subgrante, use it next time the Green Zone Initiative is sending out a note, have them send a representative so we can get them plugged into the veterans' community as well.
Okay, absolutely.
Join or whatever. So, John, so we did our little job there, okay?
Okay, happy to.
I know it doesn't apply to your level exactly, but you know, let, let your grantees know that there's an organization, it's an ad hoc organization being created to muster and kind of let everyone know what services are out there by all the different agencies out here for veterans, so, okay? All right, and I'll talk to you offline if you want, but--
That's fine, yeah, no, I would like a little more on that, so we make sure we get them the correct information and who to contact.
You bet, John, okay. All right, anything else? Public? Anybody? I don't see anything. So, is this a motion? Motion's in order. Supervisor, about your, designated hitter on this one.
I move to approve the cooperative agreement for the creation of Nevada Works.
Motion, second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thanks, folks. Thanks, John, thanks, Al.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go to 17C. Has everybody had a chance to look at the bills? Anybody want, have the city manager, question the city manager on the bills? Public comment, anybody? Take a motion to approve.
I move to ratify the approval of bills and other requests for payments by the city manager for the period of January 9th, 2016 through February 5th, 2016.
Motion, and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Okay. Let's take up 18A, possible grant for the, from the Nevada Department of Wildlife for a vault toilet and restroom associated with the Carson City Rifle and Pistol Range. Vern, you going to do this?
Yes. Yes, Mayor. For the record, Vern Kran, senior park planner. What we're asking today for permission from the board is to apply for a Nevada Department of Wildlife grant. The funds, we would be used to put in a vault toilet restroom out at the Rifle and Pistol Range. It's a sorely needed facility. The use out there has increased over the years, which we're really excited about, but we do need to provide, or at least our department feels we need to provide that basic amenity for people. So anyway, with that, I provided a bunch of information in your staff reports, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
There are a couple of questions up here. Go, we'll go this way.
Vern, can you--
The hands went up down here first, so--
Vern, can you tell us what process will be in place to protect the vault toilet? In other words, if you have used the rifle range, it gets abused. And so is there going to be any process in place, or is there anything that can be done to prevent people from shooting up the toilet? And if that does happen, what is the backup? Are there going to be reserves, maintenance reserves, to be able to repair or replace that? Or when it gets shot up to the point it can't be usable, are we just going to abandon it?
Well, I think the simple answer to that question is that our rifle and pistol range clubs out there have range monitors, so when folks are out there using it, they have people out there trying to point people in the right direction to shoot. Now, they're not out there all the time. Part of the other thing is, so there is that op, there is that possibility that that could be shot up. Part of the toilet choice that we've made is it is a concrete facility, it's a concrete building, and those are easier to patch than, let's say, a masonry block building. So part of the choice in this particular project is to choose a restroom that does have the opportunity to be repaired from a shot. We've actually talked with CTX Toilet about this situation. They've given us actually photographs of what it looks like when people do shoot these things. So they can be repaired.
And is the rifle range still being gated off at night?
We are in the process of actually putting in an automatic gate out there right now. We have a grant for that from the Nevada Department of Wildlife, and hopefully that will go in this spring. So the hope is, is that with the security measures that we're taking, that will minimize the after-dark activity. And so at least these are some opportunities that we think, not only to protect the new vault toilet, but also to protect the facility as well. Just not having people out there after dark is just not a good thing, and we've seen bad things happen out there.
Jim, Karen, and Lori, so.
Morning, Vern. On the, the facility itself, would those doors be locked at night, or would they remain open?
I think the intent right now is that if we get the automatic security gate in, that will actually close and close off the facility. I'm not sure we're going to be putting, sending a park ranger out there to actually lock the toilets at night. The idea is by using that automatic gate, that should help solve that problem.
Well, and the cleaning of the facility itself, who would that be billed to after it's completed?
My understanding is the rifle and pistol range clubs are going to be taking care of that.
Would there be, inside the facility, would there be a heater?
No, it's a, it, no.
Okay. On the funding mechanism, it says Quality of Life, Parks Capital, and then it also says hyphen Rifle and Pistol Range, $21,000. How much is coming out of each Quality of Life and the Pistol and Range account?
Very good questions. We are probably, just, just, just to kind of keep math simple, is that we're probably looking at about a $60,000 project with this, with this effort. 15% of that, it's a 25% match grant, so the city will have to provide 25% of those funds, which would be $15,000. From that $15,000, we have the fundraiser from the Northern Sierra Ladies Gun Club that raised $3,454. We have a donation from the Nevada Law Enforcement Instructors Association for $2,750. And then the remaining balance would come out of Parks Capital, question 18, which would be about $8,800 to make up the difference for the full 15%.
Thank you. So I just wanted to technically disclose that I was a member of the Nevada Law Enforcement Instructors Association and helped get the money for this, but there is no personal gain or any issues that are a conflict for me, but I did, just in case anyone wanted to know, I'm actually helped give the city some money for a project, so, but wanted to disclose.
That's a good conflict.
Yeah, I gave you money.
That's a good conflict, okay, all right.
And just to follow up on that, too, we do appreciate the partnership from what Lori, Supervisor Bagwell, was willing to do, as well as from this Northern Sierra Ladies Gun Club. It's nice to have those kind of partners in this. I think that will help our grant application immensely versus just the city coming to the table. We have partners, we have investment from people who put in time and effort in to do this, and these folks want this kind of facility out there. It not only helps the users out there, but also our law enforcement officers as well when they come out there to train and shoot at the range. So it's a needed facility.
Okay. Anybody else on the board? Public comment, anybody? Board, we ready? Who wants to do it? Oh, go, then we'll go here.
I move to approve submittal of the grant application to the Nevada Department of Wildlife for a vault toilet restroom and associated site improvements for the Carson City Rifle and Pistol Range.
Motion by Supervisor Bagwell, and numerous seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Let's take a break for about 10 minutes here, and then we'll come back, okay? All right.
You're welcome.[1590.76]
Are we ready? Anybody need more time? All right, let's take up the downtown issue. This is item number 19A. Mr. Roder, go for it.
Good morning, Mayor, Supervisors. Danny Roder, Public Works for the Record. Apologize for the tone of my voice here, just getting over a cold. So you've got the, kind of the One Pays Business Support Plan. This, this kind of was birthed out of, in, in the various meetings, walking up and down the corridor. I, I think the biggest thing people were asking for is information. They wanted to know, well, when are you going to be in front of my building? And how, how, how will people know to get to my building if the parking's impacted, or if the sidewalk's impacted? Or those sorts of things. And so while we heard their concerns about, you know, obviously, we're not going to shut the water service off to the Basil at 12:30, they were still concerned about, okay, I get that, you're going to swap it over early in the morning, and our bathrooms will be working, and our sinks will be working, but how can I get those customers to our, to our offices or businesses? So we put this kind of business support plan together, kind of also in talking with the Downtown Business Association and the Chamber of Commerce. Also, kind of touching base with Nevada Appeal and Carson Now. So right now, what we have is, we kind of do the weekly road report. We gather up what MV Energy's doing, Southwest Gas, kind of put it into a text-based simplified version that goes to the appeal, and then it's also posted on our website. Kind of the first effort, we're calling the Cone Zone, in, in, in addendum to that weekly traffic report, a stylized piece, which will include some, some further details and descriptions, and also coordinating that with Nevada Appeal. I've got kind of our first one. I'll, I'll kind of, I, I was supposed to have it on my iPad. I didn't bring the, the, the thing for the Apple TV to show it to you, but I'll pass it around to you, in case anybody's in here. I'll just read it to you. It says, "Construction updates, February 14th through the 20th." Obviously, it's a dummy one. "This week, watch for construction crews working from Fifth to Third Street. The Third Street Plaza is currently closed for parking, and those businesses can be found parking on Curry Street. There are no detours in effect, but go throughout, slow through the construction zone." And it's got different links and, and information, and also a way to get text notifications. So I'll send this around for you while I'm talking more. So that's kind of the first aspect of it. In addition to running in the appeal, the Downtown Cone Zone will be supplied to Carson Now, Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Business Association, Downtown 2020. It'll also be posted on CarsonProud.com, Carson.org, and the Carson Proud and the City's social media pages, Twitter and Facebook and Instagram. And also sent out via the Carson Proud text notifications. The third bullet down here is a, a real-time map. Will be available on CarsonProud.com, Carson.org, and, and offer up that link to all those other entities that I've already talked about. I'll show you it right now. It's, it's, again, just a test. We're still tweaking and modifying, making it look good. Yeah? Questions? Go for it.
Would it be prudent to send that same type of notification to the RGJ for those that come from Reno to commute down here?
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. So, right now, just, we've got kind of a basic Google Earth map, and you can, as you Well, should be showing there. It's showing on my iPad. Give me one second here. I'm thinking I didn't share the features. I shared the map publicly, but not the features. So I just need to sign in with my credentials. Do you guys get that? Okay. You guys, you guys want to run all this? Go for it. So I'm just going to open it up on ArcGIS here. It's, it's the same backend. It's just coded through here, but I'll show you the map. So this is, just so you know, it's, this is the backend that I see modify everything. But this is what would look like on the front. That just went with what I read on that Cone Zone. So, Third Street, closed to vehicle traffic, but parking is available in this lot. Kind of directing people down Fourth and Second over to Curry. If you click on each of these, we can have information in the pop-ups. McFadden Plaza, closed to vehicle traffic. Businesses are open during construction. There's no pedestrian access impacts. I didn't put all the businesses on here, but I did throw up, you know, hey, Mom and Pop's Diner, business is open, no access impacts. Got their hours on there. Same thing for the Ferkin. We have the ability to put photos and stuff in there, but right now, we're just kind of keeping it simple. Getting, getting hours, businesses are open. If there, if for some reason there was an impact to one door or the other, we would put that on there, put a little pop-up to direct people where they need to go. And so I have the ability, and we're working with Loomis and Q&amp;D, have the ability to real-time update this. If something went wrong, and they had to close the sidewalk on the north side, I could write from my phone where I was at, upload that. So that's the third bullet point there, the real-time map. And then kind of these last four are, are just extra avenues, every avenue that we have to get that information out. So we're going to enable a downtown construction category on Carson Connect. I think Carson Connect's been a good way for people to submit requests and claims, and, and the ability, right from their phone, to take a picture of whatever's going on, send it to us. And so that'll, that'll be going on. Also, we're going to enact a, a phone line that will have a number. It'll be a pre-recorded message where they can, they can call, leave a message, and, receive a call within 24 hours if they didn't want to enter it into Carson City Connect, just wanted to do a phone number, like my grandma or somebody. Also, the live chat function, we're going to enable on the website. That will be staffed by Nick's office, or, or somebody at his choosing. And I'll, I'll be supporting in all that as well. Last bullet point here, a pre-construction meeting will be held to gather up any of the businesses, property owners, public, ask those questions that, you know, maybe six months ago, they asked, but we didn't have quite the answers yet. And as we start to get the, the more detailed construction schedule worked out, and we have Q&amp;D there with the actual field supervisor, instead of just a project manager, we're going to try and pin all those together in the coming weeks. Once we have that date, location, all that sort of stuff, we'll get that all out to you all, and also all the social media, and Carson Proud, Carson City, all those sorts of things. So that was, that's generally my update. If you have questions.
Just have a, a basic comment. Having had a business on Highway 50 for 18 years, I remember back in the 80s, the early 80s, mid 80s, we used to get notified by NDOT. We'd get a notice in the mail that said, "We're closing the highway for the next three weeks to repave it." That's it. That was the only communication, and then your business was basically shut down for three weeks while they did one end of the road to the other. So this, to me, is amazing, the level of communication and interaction and effort that's going in to communicate this out to the public. I mean, I'm, I'm just blown away.
I think it's going to be very helpful, helpful for the community. I think it's a, a great idea, whoever put this whole thing together. I think it's going to be very beneficial for the citizens, and more so for the businesses. It seems like it's going to be very time-consuming, though. I don't know. That's just my, just looking at it, thinks it's going to take a lot of time. I don't know who's in charge of it, but, um, do you have any idea of when you're going to break ground yet?
We've talked with Q&amp;D. The first step will be utilities. Obviously, we've talked before. Likely, we're going to be putting together the kind of ceremony-type thing, the week of March 8th. Still working out all the details of that. Likely, though, they will be mobilizing to Carson with all their facilities, and while they may not be actively under construction that week, that we'll be working on where we're going to start, looking at utility locates, that sort of thing, to make sure we're, we're ready to, to go. And they may, they may actually, actually break ground, start construction that week, too, but it may be the week after.
So then, Danny, my questions go to the live chat function. And so I'm, I'm trying to understand, how are we, is live chat a 24-hour-a-day? We have somebody assigned to, to live chat with someone?
I, I think I can handle that one. As part of our new website redesign, we're going to have a, a button on our homepage. During work hours, I'll have it staffed, and we'll talk about that in a few agenda items, who's going to staff that. So we'll have it staffed during work hours, in the evening, or on weekends, or when we're not providing coverage, they, they can still click on the button. It'll give them the ability to leave a message, and we'll get back to them. Over the weekend and things like that, I'm going to be checking it. So we'll get back to them, but it's primarily during work hours. If you go to the City of Reno's homepage, you'll see the function that I'm talking about.
I'm more concerned with the staffing that'll have to be watching for a live chat alert, or something to say, "Chat with me."
Sure, and we'll have the ability, you'll have the ability to monitor that wherever you are. I mean, on a mobile device, you get an alert, someone wants to have a chat, and ask a question about, hey, where can I park in the vicinity of Third Street, or whatever the type of question might be. So you don't need to be sitting in front of a workstation if that, if that's what your question is.
So my question is, won't you see that live chat will be more than just something for the downtown? Will it become that somebody's just live chatting?
Sure.
And I want to know about how to get a tree cut, or something that's over on XYZ Street?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So are, are we thinking of expanding a service to a live chat, is what I'm trying to get to?
That's a great question, Supervisor. And our intent is, my intent is, it's going to be a, a one-stop shop for any question about city government. So we're going to provide any, or every possible mean for residents to interact with city government. Carson City Connect was the first big step. Having a live chat feature is kind of the next step. Obviously, during our downtown construction project, it's going to have that type of focus, but it's intended to provide the one-stop shop. You want to know how to pay a bill online? You want to know, how do I reserve a room at the community center, or whatever it is? That's the intent of having that function. So you don't have to navigate, is this, do I contact Public Works? Do I contact Parks and Rec? Doesn't matter. You just go right to the city homepage, and you'll, you'll be connected with the answer you're looking for.
Anybody else on the board? Public comment? Anybody? All the way in? Anybody? Board? This is an non-action item. Thank you, Mr. Roder. Very much.
You're welcome.
Well done. Okay. Get ready. Good thing the Marines are doing the live chat. That's fine. Okay.
Actually, it goes to Nick's cellphone, you know?
I know. All right. Let's go to...
Pass the football. It's your turn.
IT. 21.
Emergency manager.
Emergency, Emergency Operations Center, Stacy. Come on. Yeah.
How are you guys this morning? Real quick, we just wanted to give you a brief overview of some emergency operation stuff. It's probably been a while since you guys have reviewed it, and we're doing this partly because we're ramping up for some possible flooding, if we have any, and we have to open our EOC. And we've been doing some practicing with some new technologies that we have currently for the city. Some of the stuff you saw on mapping that was going on with Danny Roder, we're looking at doing the same thing. I don't know if you guys noticed, today, we had a bunch of Twitter feeds, and we had Facebook feeds going up about what the fire department and what the parks are doing, or Public Works were doing. So we just want to make sure that you guys are up and where that we're doing that. And this is a brief overview of an EOC, if we have to actually activate it, and what your guys' roles will be, and how we'll pump you guys with information, so you're not out there kind of blind, if you're in the public, and when everything's moving and going. So that's kind of what we're doing.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Stacy Bell, Deputy Emergency Manager for Carson City. And like the chief said, we're going to talk a little bit about emergency operations and how it works in Carson City. It's actually a standardized operation. It's a standardized system. It's the same across the country. After the events of 9/11, we were required, based on Homeland Security, it's the bottom line, Homeland Security Directive, to implement what's called the National Incident Management System. And that allows us to operate our emergency operations in response, the same as they do it in Louisville, Kentucky, or our neighboring jurisdictions, Douglas County, Lyon County, et cetera. So, so as part of that mandate, we have implemented the National Incident Management System training across the city, in all disciplines, from the Health Department, to Public Works, to law enforcement, everyone has been trained. Part of the reason they've been trained is because the system works, but the other part of the reason is because it is a mandate. And in order, if we declare a disaster, to receive either federal or state funds to help with the cleanup and emergency response related to the disaster, we have to be able to demonstrate that, in fact, we have implemented NIMS in Carson City. So it is, it helps with our, our federal assistance. It's built on best practices. The National Incident Management System, and then I'll also talk about the Incident Command System, actually go back to the 1970s, and it was fire services that implemented that. Didn't make sense to keep 1,000 firefighters on staff in case they had a fire. What makes sense is the ability to send 1,000 firefighters to a fire, and for them to be able to operate in the same way, regardless of where that geographic location is. So it's built on best practices, over 45, nearly 50 years of implementing this in all levels of response. And it allows us to operate flexibly. So an incident can be as small as this morning's snow incident. There were four of us that met at the Emergency Communicate, or Emergency Operations Center, and we were able to push information out to the public, maintain a fairly common operating picture, and get an idea of where our resources were. So that was a little bit of a no-notice event. We thought we were going to get rain when we got snow, but we also use the system for planned events. So when we did the, the fair, when we do our, when we host the annual parade, we use the National Incident Management System and the command structure to plan for those events. So Public Works, Law Enforcement, Fire, Emergency Management sit down and plan out for those events. As I said, and this is repetitive, it's standardized. It is separate from what your daily operations are. So if we have a Planning Section Chief, that might normally be a Battalion Chief, but in an incident, or during an incident, that person would be called a Planning Section Chief, or an Operations Section Chief, or an Incident Commander, different than our daily roles. It's standardized so that we can assist our neighboring jurisdictions, and our neighboring jurisdictions can assist us. We formed a Quad County Emergency Coordination Center, and we communicate on a almost daily basis about the incidents that are happening in our jurisdictions, so that we're able to support our neighbors, and our neighbors are able to support us.
The four counties are?
Douglas, Douglas County, Carson City, Story County, and Lyon County. So those four counties work together daily. When we talk about an incident, one of the things that I really want to focus on is incidents happen, and responsibility for incidents are at the lowest jurisdictional level. So an incident that happens in Carson City is our responsibility, your responsibility. We will always have command and control of that incident and responsibility for it. We may ask for assistance from our, our neighboring jurisdictions. We may exceed those resources and ask for additional resources from our state partners. They may go to their partners in neighboring states, and then it goes to a federal level. But all incidents are managed at the lowest jurisdictional level. So what's your role? An incredibly important one. Our ability to provide information to you, and your ability to provide information to your constituents and to the rest of the city, is essential. We know that pushing public information and being certain that we're getting the right message out at the right time is critical to the safety and well-being of our community. So we rely on you to address the media, to reach out to, to your community. And it's our, what's the word? We commit to you that we will be providing you that information. Mutual aid and assistance agreements, I think I talked a little bit about that. Mutual aid, with my office residing in, in the Fire Department, I see on a daily basis. We have East Fork Fire responding in Carson City. We support Truckee Meadows, et cetera. So those jurisdictions are working on, on a, on a fairly regular basis. It's the same in law enforcement. That allows us to be able to respond in a cohesive manner when the big one, it, happens, and we have agreements in place. What's the overall goal? Continuity. Right? We need to provide services. We need to support our community. We need to make sure that, as a governing body, as servants of the public, that we are able to provide essential, essential functions to our community. That's our guiding principle. So we talk about an Emergency Operations Center, or an Emergency Coordination Center. I like Emergency Coordination Center. We have historically used Emergency Operations Center. But the Coordination Center really is the piece that maintains a common operating picture, and allows us to coordinate the deployment of resources and information. The people, the Operations Section, the boots on the ground, are getting the job done. We're just helping them and assisting them in coordinating whatever it is that they need. So this morning, we had a, a fairly quiet Emergency Coordination Center.
But you will notice, how many people are in that picture? Yeah, we don't have that. So it was like three of us. So just so you know.
We don't have, we have a dedicated location for an Emergency Coordination Center to happen. It is not nearly as, as technology-driven as, as this particular Emergency Coordination Center depicts, but, but we get the job done. How are we guided? Emergency Operations Plans. So in the last year, the City of Carson City, all of the department had sat down and provided input on their capabilities, their resources, and we were able to update and rewrite the Carson City Emergency Operations Plan. We also updated and have submitted to FEMA, and will be submitting to you upon their approval, our new Hazard Mitigation Plan, which weighs the hazards and the impact of certain types of hazards, whether it be weather-related, earthquake, et cetera. And it outlines what we face in Carson City, where we should be placing our, our energies in mitigating any type of, of incident. So guided by Emergency Operations Plans and the Hazard Mitigation Plans. And really, there are three key phases. There is the incident and the immediate response. That is operations, boots on the ground, et cetera. We're very good at that. Your piece in that is, we will develop situational awareness, and we'll push that information to you. Then we have to talk about the recovery piece. The recovery piece is our ability to get back up online and serving our community. It is seeking assistance, and again, that piece of informing the public. What happens during recovery? What is it that we're able to do for you? Where do you need to go for additional resources or information regarding recovery? And then we have to look at what happened, why it happened, and was there anything that we could have done to mitigate those circumstances from occurring again? So it's a full circle. And, and we, again, lessons learned. Our ability to learn lessons from incidents that have happened. So the Emergency Coordination Center operates in a small room, and communicates constantly with the Incident Commander, who is operating out of an Incident Command post. So I know we have the tendency to show up on the scene, and what we're really encouraging or hoping is that we end up at the Emergency Coordination Center and get our information that way, letting the boots on the ground do their work, and then all of us operating out of the Emergency Coordination Center. And them, those boots on the ground feeding us information. The benefits, it is prioritization, another area that we're going to look to you for. We have two fires, one on the south side and one on the north side. A field is burning on the south side, and residents and businesses may be threatened on the north side. I think we would be able to make a decision in that case. But I remember hearing a story back in the flooding, was it 97, 98, when a street on the west side was flooding, and the question was, are our resources being used to sandbag private residents or businesses? And I know that Command came to the Board of Supervisors and asked for their direction in what our priority should be. It's also the laws and the governing body for you to help direct us when we have questions. It's our ability to order resources, go up to the state, or to our neighboring jurisdictions, and, and getting those resources to support the actual operations that are happening in the field. It's really, it's a communication conduit. It's a liaison piece. Situational awareness and common operating picture. Really, it is our ability to keep you, keep the city manager, and keep the citizens of Carson City informed about what's happening around them. Information allows everyone to make better decisions. So we're constantly monitoring and trying to put that, push that information out. How do we do that? I think that, that Chief Srihans mentioned the mapping capability that Danny Roder was talking about. We've been using that the last couple of days. We're using social media. We're using as many venues as we can to push that information out, including our media partners with Nevada Appeal, Carson Now, et cetera. Another way that we're able to do that is through our Code Red system. Code Red is a reverse 911 system that allows us to very quickly reach out to the entire community of Carson City, a list of people, say, the people that needed to report to an Emergency Coordination Center, or a group of volunteers, or a designated neighborhood. So if we had a law enforcement-type incident where there was a threat in a specific neighborhood, we would be able to map that area and push out a message that said, "Please shelter in place. Turn off all your lights." So I want to talk just a minute about how you make sure you're included in those alerts. And you can go to Carson.org backslash alerts, and you can voluntarily sign up. I brought some brochures, brought some posters, I brought some handouts.
One of the things is, on the Code Red, just so you guys know, we use it all the time. So we use it all the time for a couple of things. One, Public Works uses it, especially if we're doing water flows, because if we test a hydrant, or if we test a water system, sometimes the water will turn colors, so we tell you. But also, on the industrial structure fire we had a few months ago, we activated Code Red, and we put in, we activated that system, you know, shelter. Red and we put in, we activated that system, you know, shelter in place and there is a fire in the area and you will see smoke. So we use this all the time. So as the folks who are watching, we'd like you to sign up for this too, because we can also access your cell phones. We have immediate impact to landlines, but as we're going away from landlines, we need to activate cell phones. And if you have the Code Red app in your phone, we can actually hit your cellphone system. So that's our plug.
So if you downloaded the app and you happen to be standing in the area of the structure fire we fought a couple of months ago, your phone would automatically have pinged you and told you that you were in danger. So yeah, I encourage you to download the app, voluntarily sign up, and you can determine, I only want to be notified if it's an emergency, or I want to be notified on everything. As a private citizen, you have the ability to make that selection. What questions do you have for us?
Pretty good brief.
That's an eight-hour class in less than 10 minutes. Pretty good, huh?
That's pretty good. You're doing all right. You're doing all right. Karen.
The Code Red app, that is a free app, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Where's the coordination center?
Currently, it is at the fire station. Well, we were trying to say, we're not going to tell you exactly, but it's not one of the fire stations. No, well, yeah, and we have the ability to move it. So let's say, for instance, if we have an earthquake and we take out our fire stations, all right, we can move that. So we have three facilities in the city that we can instantly go to. And we really don't want to tell you exactly where it is, because if we have an emergency operation going, we don't want everybody else to know. And secondarily, one of the things that we want to bring up to you, it really is a span of control issue for us. Okay, that's what incident command does. It creates span of control for us. So as incidents grow, if it's a normal, small, particular instance, we handle it day-to-day, but as it ramps up, we just keep adding layers. And it gets down to, we try to keep direct control of about seven different functions. It's about maximum one person can handle, and that's what this operation system does. So under emergency operations center, when you guys are going to be notified, so most likely is, you know, the CNN will be talking, trying to get ahold of you guys. We will be pumping you information, so you have accurate information and you'll get live feeds from where we are in the field to make sure that happens for you.
Can you give Code Red apps?
Well, I would sign up for Code Red apps for you guys, because if we, like, if we pulled it out today citywide, says, hey, there's a snow event, you know, look outside your window, it would have hit your phones, okay?
We have a contact group in Code Red that says Board of Supervisors.
Right, we can contact you guys specifically. And then also, but we want everybody else to do it, so we can hit all those.
And in this reverse 911 process, if for instance, let's use the waterfall fire as an example, if people have to evacuate to a location, will you have mapping capability on your phone so they can actually see where they need to go?
Well, the Code Red system is going to alert you, right? And we can say, you know, it'll tell you, go to Carson Web, go to your iPhones for mapping, and then you can hop on the Carson City website. So we have that mobile technology to tell you where to go. But we'll also designate where it's going to be. So for instance, the shelter is going to be at the MAC building. We'll tell you, go to the MAC, right? People should know where it is, you would hope.
We'll make sure they get there.
Yeah, but we'll make sure we get the mapping.
All right, a couple, three questions. One, is the Mammoth volcano still a threat?
You know, we left it in our hazard mitigation plan. Probably a very low impact and a low probability, but we did have considerable discussion regarding it, and it's still left in the hazard mitigation plan.
Second, maybe this is for Adriana, but what is the, what happens to the open meeting law during a disaster or an incident?
Well, if you declare...
Does anything change on the open meeting law?
If the city declares a state of emergency, so let's say, for instance, we have a major earthquake, okay? And we have to, we're going to activate our delegation of authority, so we're going to bring in a type-one team. Normally, you've delegated that to me, I can do that. But if we have a citywide earthquake and you have to, we have to have a board of supervisors' meeting, you can waive the open meeting law for that, because it's a declared emergency and you have to get that, I mean, we can post it after the fact, but you can make those onsite command decisions, especially if you're all in the EOC together as a group. You can say, this is a convergence of an emergency operations center, and you'll have those abilities. And then you still have to do some of the stuff later through posting.
But there is a specific provision that allows you to not have to do the three-day posting. A lot of agencies try to use that to, as an excuse, but the Attorney General has opinions that are very specific, that it has to be an actual emergency.
And when there is an incident, who is the incident commander and who designates that?
Well, it lies with most likely the fire department, because we're going to be the first ones there. Even if it's a, even if it's a law enforcement event, okay, I mean, eventually we show up, right, the fire department will be there if there's people injured. So it really depends on what it is. But let's say, for instance, it's an earthquake, we'll take that. The fire department sets up incident command and then we take it from there. We designate it up, and as it goes into an emergency operations center, the commander of the emergency operations center will be in charge. And normally, right now, it's emergency management, so it's the fire department, along with Unified Command, which will be you guys, and sheriff and the city manager, but we all make a collective group. But the fire department is usually in charge of those.
And does the Board of Supervisors, as a group, as a board, have any management authority or management duties with respect to an incident? Do they have authority over the incident commander, or who actually runs the incident? Who actually runs the...
Well, you ever hear that saying, you know, things went fine until the chiefs show up?
Right.
Right? Same thing will happen if the Board of Supervisors show up under emergency.
No. We'll rely on you as an advisory.
No, but what happens is that, yeah, you become an advisory role and we will, but what happens is as we're running the incident, okay, we have commanders on the scene, right? You guys won't be there, you'll be at the emergency operations center if we have a citywide event. And then based on those decisions, then that will get funneled through the incident commander back to the operations guys. And you guys will be in a group, because most likely it's going to be about funding, emergency status is going to be, you know, are we notifying, going up to the state, do we notify FEMA? Is it going to be all those things requested? PIO stuff? So you guys will be at that level on an oversight, 30,000-foot level, and then we'll take care of the on-the-ground stuff.
And I know we laugh about that and we joke about it, but I think it's important to realize that. I mean, I for one, you know, believe that, you know, when there's an incident happens, you let the professionals take care of it and you stay out of their way. And so, you know, I'm glad to hear you say that. I mean, I know...
Yeah, no, we are joking, but what we do though is you guys will be at the 30,000-foot level. So we'll give you, obviously, a citywide event, right? Finance is going to be a big issue, impact's going to be a big issue, businesses will be issued, how are we going to back up and run it? Who becomes prioritized as far as if we have to have streets closed, shut down, all that kind of stuff? I mean, you'll be in those decisions. And some of that stuff, say, we're going to shut down Highway 50 for the next five days because of this incident, you guys need to bear aware of that. And you have to, like Brad, you were saying earlier before about the impact that it has of businesses, that's something you guys will be involved in.
And you're the one who deals with the press all the time, right?
Yeah, I might turn it to you, though. No, what we'll do, though, during those incidents, that's where we have our PIOs actually step in. So we make sure that you guys have the correct information if you get caught, but our official notification to the press goes through an actual public information officer.
Wonderful. Okay.
One more final question, sorry. When there's, something in the community happens, like when we lost Deputy Howell, is that Code Red, would that be given out to the elected officials or other persons? Could that be utilized in that fashion?
It could be, absolutely. For notification purposes, absolutely. For some of those, as I mentioned, there are contact groups that we've built in Code Red, so certainly wouldn't be a public notification, but yes, we could utilize it for that type of notification.
And a lot of those too, though, we've set up that on some of the incidents that we're worried about, we'll contact the city manager, and then we're letting him contact you guys. So we're not, we're not contacting, it's going through him, so he's aware, and then he can contact you. So you're not getting pinged at 3:00 AM going, what's going on? He'll call you.
But I think that's a good point, supervisor. And we're going to provide a great deal more information about emerging events, even if they don't rise to the level of an earthquake, some of the recent flooding we've had and things like that. So if we did have a Board of Supervisors Code Red group, I think that would be good. It'd be a very quick and easy way to get information out, and you'd all have it at the same time.
Thank you.
With regards to flooding, because I remember that vividly, in 1997, getting a call at midnight from Kenny, that the business was flooding. But the procedure was that we went to a central location to get sandbags, and then people were responsible to sandbag, whether it be their residence or their business. Procedure-wise, do you know what, how you're going to handle that? Will it be the same type of format, just a central drop for sandbags and people pick up and...
It'll be similar. We had a meeting at the end of October of 2015 with Public Works and other partners that would assist with flooding-type events. And we were able to determine two locations that we will use for the public to be able to pick up those sandbags.
Plus, we have, we also have the ability to move them, right? So let's say, for instance, if we know Fish Street, an area up on West Fish is going to, we can drop off a bunch and then we'll put out, hey, there's a bunch of sandbags at this location, okay? Plus, we have our CERT folks and everything else we have, we're ramping up if we have that issue, that we can put in there to help fill all those.
Anybody else? Public, anybody want to weigh in? I don't see any, this is for information only. Stacy, very good presentation.
Thank you.
Well done, well done. All right, let's take up item 21. Eric? Got you and the chief here, so we, I think we've all read the board report. Give us the highlights and tell us why you want to do this.
Sure. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Eric Von Schimmelmann, Chief Information Officer for the city. So what we're working here with, with the cooperation of the fire department, we're looking at taking one of his office specialist positions and moving that to information technology. That's in a nutshell. So basically, we have to remove that position from fire and move the funding over, so that it's covered under IT. This position now is going to be the information management officer, and they will be in charge of social media for the entire city. That's the main goal right there, is to get information out to the public. The current position, in her current role, she is doing a lot of social media directly for the fire department. We're trying to coordinate, get a coordinated effort across the entire city, so that one message goes out and it's all the same message. Instead of having fire have a social media person, sheriff, Public Works, IT, city manager, whoever, we're trying to do this as a coordinated effort, and the best way to do that is with a single position here. We did at one point have a part-time person trying to do the social media for the city as an overall. That did not seem to work out very well. That only lasted about two months, and we realized that it really needed to be a full-time position. That person's going to be going to all the board meetings, doing Twitter feeds, social media from here. They will also be working with me with the website design, again, for public information. A lot of this is so we can get information out as fast as possible to the public, public safety notifications, street closures. They're going to be working with this fire department, emergency management with Stacy, and getting out the information as fast as possible. Let's see, what else do we have with that? I think that's about all we're going to do with the position. If we have any other questions on it...
Chief, you okay with this? I put you on the spot.
I know, right? Well, you know what? I was lucky enough to hire a really talented person to fill that role, and I have the city manager noticed that, and she actually did the videos and stuff, and she's sitting back over here. So we were lucky to have her. Yeah, we're willing to help out and to make this, to work for the city, and we'll come back probably through the budgetary process, but, and talk with you, but we're glad to make your help out on how this works and to make that position work for the city, because she was doing a great role and actually needs to be centralized with these guys.
Brad.
So what duties that she has now are you going to have to absorb?
Well, what we're doing is, before we had a part-time position, it's going, we have that, we're going to have that part-time position to be able to work with that. And we are evaluating everything that we're doing now. We're working with HR to see if we can actually get some stuff off our plate to go through HR. And then also, we're looking at all the roles that we're doing and figure out what we should and shouldn't be doing within the department. A lot of stuff, maybe we can automate some of the things. Like we have specifically, you know, we get a lot of phone calls on CPR classes and all of our trailer programs and all that stuff. We're going to have to set specific hours when you can call and that kind of thing to be able to meet those needs. So that's what we're looking at doing.
So if I understand this correctly, the IT position will be, have the ultimate responsibility for social media, all the social media platforms for the entire city, but there'll be additional social media people in different departments, and the IT person will coordinate with all of those. So they'll be feeding, the department IT people will be feeding, or social media people will be feeding information up now to the overall supervisor position.
Yeah, that's correct. We're looking at trying to get everybody to coordinate this. Also with that, we've got departments that have outsourced their social media, so those departments, she'll be actually doing the social media for them. That's our goal, ultimate goal here, is to have, again, a common message throughout the entire city, so...
And then can you go over the numbers? So the numbers, what's currently being spent for the position at the fire department as opposed to what the new position will be? So kind of give us an overall financial picture of how this is all going to work.
Okay. So the way we've worked this out is the salary is going to come over at the same salary. So the only difference in the existing right now that you will see is a difference in the per's contributions, because it will be an exempt position. Now, when you do a top-to-top comparison of this, which I figure would take probably five years to get there, the total difference in the two grade steps is $11,517. And again, that would be, you would see that somewhere down the road, five years or so.
How many departments have social media? And what is it costing us? And if I'm understanding it, we're still going to allow that to go, but they'll report to this new person? Or are we going to continue all that other social media that everyone else? Or how many departments have it? I guess is the first question.
The last count, I counted was probably five departments. I mean, Public Works, fire, sheriff, there's a couple others out there, health department we're working with. They all have individual people or outsourced. So we're trying to coordinate, and again, getting a coordinated message out. So she's going to work directly with them, help them out as much as possible. And if she needs to take over and do that for that department, that's what the ultimate goal is, so that there is not a department person. I mean, they can feed up messages if they want. If they have somebody that is already good with that and can work with us, that's great. Again, we just want to get a common picture out there.
So departments will still have their own social media person? That person will report to this person in this department now? So we're still, do we have any idea how much funding all social media departments were spending?
I don't think anyone has a full, no, in fact, I know, no one has a full-time social, this will be the only full-time position that'll handle social media as well as all information requirements. Most of them have a person as an additional duty. They do Facebook or they do tweets or things like that. I think one of the departments has outsourced it, and we're going to collect that one back. But I don't think in any case, if that answers your question, there's not a full-time social media people.
Well, the sheriff has a full-time, or we're outsourcing it. Is that, is that coming back to IT department, or is that still going to be outsourced?
We're going to work with the sheriff's department on that and bringing that back in-house is the ultimate goal.
Would that social media person take the pictures instead of Nick?
Yes.
Good.
Because other duties on there are actually working with our video production, because I'm also looking at expanding that. Not only these meetings, we're going to try to do ground breakings, everything outside the city or outside these walls. This person will be attending every city event and taking care of all media presentation for that.
So I just want to do a little bit of follow-up and make sure that we're all on the same page and understanding where we're going with this potentially. So first and foremost, I want to ensure that it doesn't mean the fire department is coming back for a July 1 halftime position to fill the void from losing this position. So you're going to be able to actually absorb the duties with your restructure. I just want to make sure that, again, we're not going to see a proposal that comes to us in, I don't know, two weeks, four weeks, that says you need a halftime or a... know, two weeks, four weeks, that says you need a halftime or a position.
Well, I'm not going to guarantee you that, but, because we're going to have to look at it in the future if we're going to get busy and take care of these things. We have to allocate what we're doing. So, you know, and we're looking at trying to work with HR to see if we can get some of the stuff off our plate and move it, move it to there. And if we can do that, great. If we can't, then we'll come through Nick and we'll come through the budgetary process. But, I mean, we're a busy group, and those guys are really busy, and we're trying to figure out how to make it all work together right now.
So the reason that I ask is, it's our role up here to look at everything that we do for the priorities. And so that's, that's my question. And so I'm concerned, are we going to turn around and impact the Fire Department negatively to provide the service that's needed? Because we so desperately want to provide this Twitter feeds and Facebooks, and they're all so needed. So I don't want anyone to understand that I don't see the purposes. But is it a higher priority than what the needs are in the Fire Department? So I'm kind of concerned. We're taking it, and then you're going to figure out if you can manage without the position? That's, that's a pretty difficult task for me to understand. And then the secondary thought is, I also don't want to see a Sheriff's contract and a Carson Proud contract to be doing these items. If we need to make up $11,517 for the change in our methodology, those dollars then need to be recouped and reduced from those other accounts. So I, I'm trying to see the whole picture before we jump on a decision that we're making here today without the rest of the answers. So.
Yeah, I, I think the, the bottom line is, I'm confident from my analysis of what the requirements are, both within the Fire Department and what I'm proposing here in terms of the IT Department, that we're going to be able to cover down on the requirements. The chief already has a part-time position. We're going to take a good look at what all the functions are that the incumbent currently performs for the Fire Department. But I think the important thing is, people say social media, and you think, kind of like a frivolous Facebook post. Today is a very good example. And as we introduce new technology, Danny Roder showed you the interactive map for the construction. We're going to be implementing interactive, real-time and near-real-time maps for emergency situations like today. We were putting Twitter feed and Facebook posts out about west side trees down and things like that. We're going to make it a lot better so that instead of just putting a tweet out that says, Carson City Fire Departments recommend pedestrians and motorists avoid west side as there are numerous trees down, I want to be able to publish a map that has all the specific location where those trees are down, where the power lines are down. And it's updated. And especially as we lean forward into March, which appears as if it could be a very wet and above-normal interim temperature month, we could have significant flooding. So I'm just using that as an example. This position that I'm proposing to move over into IT would be responsible for synchronizing and disseminating all that information that comes up through the Sheriff's Office, through the Fire Department, through Public Works, and making sure it's disseminated out to the residents. So I see this as a critical position. The, from within the IT Department, we'll be able to cover down on some of the current duties that, that she's performing within the Fire Department, and we'll be able to also cover down across the city as well.
So the discussion for me is, why aren't we doing this with the actual budget process that we're going to be doing in a month, where we're actually able to see what is being presented to us from all of the other budgets? And so it's a philosophical discussion potentially here, is should we be moving positions and making changes when we're a month out of having public comments and looking at the overall budget process as, in its entirety? So.
Sure. I mean, that's a good question, but I can give you a real answer to what you described as a philosophical question. I've given my staff February 29th as we're going to be ready for March. Again, we've got, and with the recent storm, we have much higher-than-normal snowpack, much higher-than-normal water content within the snowpack. We're looking at a higher-than-average wet and higher-than-average temperature in March. You put all those together, that's, I don't want to be alarmist, but we're going to be ready for any type of flooding. That's why this position is here in front of you in February, why it's not part of the budget process. I want to be ready to go in an integrated way before the end of this month. That's, that, that's what caused us to come at this particular point in time.
Go ahead.
Nick, just as a follow-up, I understand where Lori's coming from, but I also understand that the goal is to eliminate duplication and to make this position more comprehensive in terms of its approach. My question, and I'll just use the corridor construction as an example, when is the impetus contract up? And when can this, this position kind of step into those shoes too? End of February 2016.
End of February.
Okay, great. Thank you.
How about the contract that's in the Sheriff's Department for the outsourced? When, when does that one end?
Good morning. Kathy Heath, for the record. We don't actually have a contract for these types of services. What we do is we pay a small monthly amount to a, to an outside company.
So one month, we could terminate that activity?
We do not have a contract, and it's $300 per month.
Okay.
Is how much we pay.
Well, that's $3,600 though, towards an $11,000.
Yeah. We didn't get any new money to do that. We just absorbed it out of not doing something else instead of doing that. If that answers your question. Good.
Mel, did you want to add? Melanie?
I, I do think that the City Manager deserves kudos in this situation because he has looked at the organization and what's needed. And in this case, we have a lot of admin staff at the Fire Department, and I'm not saying that it's not needed. However, because of the, the admin staff there and the work processes, HR is working with the Fire Department to see, he does have a new department business manager. So we hope that a lot of the duties that one of the admin assistants currently doing can be moved over to the department business manager, which we expect will happen soon. That position has been vacant for quite a while, so it is a new position that was filled, and that person is getting on board and learning those duties. So that will create some alleviation in the admin staff as well.
Anybody else on the board? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in? Come on.
My name's Brian Doyle. I'm president of the Carson City Employees Association now. Like to introduce myself as board supervisors.
Hi, Brian.
City Manager. I just wanted to make sure that the position being vacated would remain a CCEA position. That's about it.
So the classification of office specialist is not being eliminated from CCEA. We still have other office specialists throughout the city. This new classification, however, will be an unclassified position and falls under the administrative exemption of the FLSA. So the answer is no, the classification is not leaving CCEA.
Any FLSA's Fair Labor Standards Act?
Yes, sir.
Brian, you okay?
Thank you.
All right. All right. Anybody else in the public want to weigh in? Board? Personally, I think that this is something that is well overdue, and I commend the City Manager for looking to find, find a way to address these issues on a citywide basis. And I'm, I look, I know there's going to be some bumps trying to make sure that we coordinate departments. But I think in today's age, what we're seeing is the ability to really get a lot of information out in a coherent way that can be highly beneficial. And I, I tend to agree with Lori in a sense, you know, that maybe we do this in a budget. But I also understand, you know, that time can be of the essence in something like this, and it's time, it's time to move forward. So that's my own sense. So, Board, it's your prerogative. Go, Lori.
So I could support this as long as I'm assured that we're not going to be renewing an impetus contract, and we're not going to be paying ongoing monthly fees to outside sources. And so if you can assure me that that's, that's in the works, that that'll be not in the next budget, it's not going to be in there, then I'm comfortable with moving with your plan. But I just want to make sure that everyone's not going to be doing those contracts, or monthly fees.
Okay. Board? We'll try a motion, see where it goes. You want to answer that?
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Go.
I move to eliminate the full-time office specialist CCEA grade A2 position currently budgeted under the Fire Department, and to approve budgeting a full-time Information Management Officer, unclassified grade T1 position, which will report to the Chief Information Officer.
There's a motion and a second. On the motion discussion.
Yes.
Discussion's in order. Super Shirk.
I am in favor of this. I, I think it's a very hard position to come out and say that we won't do something until the budget, and as Lori proposed. I don't think anybody can do that at this juncture. Would we need to hire somebody back at the Fire Department? Maybe, possibly. But I think this is a step in the right direction. We're, we're about 10 years behind everybody else. And this is where we need to be going today because we, we should have been there 10 years ago. So I think this is a great move. So I do support it.
I'd just like to say that I have concerns about, especially now that the economy is getting better, about kind of being nickel-and-dimed on positions, adding positions. But at the same time, we have a City Manager for a reason, and I don't want to micromanage him. And this is his call. It's his suggestion. And I assume that he's done his homework on it. So therefore, I'll support it.
Okay. Well, I have a motion and a second, I believe, and I have someone that just came to the table. I usually don't take, do you want to say something?
My name is Rachel Ann Schneider, and I've been, I put myself through college. I've been working my way up to a position like this. I studied public relations at UNR. I believe I have what it takes to foster in a new way of communication on behalf of the city and engage, increase community engagement as well. And if you give me this chance, I'd be more than happy, appreciate all of it, every second of it.
She's a great fire ops partner.
Been in a burning building with her. I know what she can do.
All right. All right. On the motion, any further discussion by anybody? Not all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay carried. Anybody nay? No nays? Okay. Thank you. All right. Thanks for the cooperation of everybody out there. Okay? All right. Let's take up the item 22. Janice, you going to do this? Board members, do we have any specific questions of Janice? We've all read the report. Why don't we just take it from there and see if there's? I'm just looking at time.
Are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for, if we're, if we're okay, if we're okay, Board, I'd like to just do a motion and go on. But if we're not, then I don't want to force change anybody from doing this. So.
Well, I think a brief discussion.
All right.
A presentation of what we're doing before we.
Sure.
Make a motion.
So Janice Keeler, Grants Administrator. This item is for possible action to authorize staff to submit an application to the National Endowment for the Arts, for the Artworks Grant Program in the amount of $40,000. So to sum it up briefly, we would like to apply for funding from the National Endowment for the Arts to create three art pieces as part of the downtown streetscape enhancement project. We, it's a one-to-one match. We have that match through the bench sponsorships that the Chamber of Commerce, the program that they started. So we have the match, and so I'm just working on putting the application together right now. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
Questions are in order. Go.
Janice, my only question is, first, the comment, thank you for applying for this. Second of all, the interactive art would be a good consideration for this downtown project. So just a thought.
Okay. And the category I'm applying for is visual arts. So if you would like to talk to me at some point about what you have in mind, then, then I'd be happy to.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Public, want to weigh in? I don't see any motions in order.
I move to authorize staff to submit an application to the National Endowment of the Arts for the Artworks Grant Program in the amount of $40,000.
Motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay carried unanimous. Okay. Thank you, Janice. All right. Let's take up the condition of each fund in the Treasury. Everybody had a chance to look at that. If there's questions, we'll take a motion.
I move to accept the report on the condition of each fund in the Treasury and the statements of receipts and expenditures through February 5, 2016, per NRS 251.030 and NRS 354.290.
Motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay carried unanimous. Okay. Let's take up the deletion of capital assets. 22, Charlie. See Nancy, Ms. Paulson.
Good morning, Nancy Paulson, Chief Financial Officer for Carson City. This action is to allow the Finance Department to delete capital assets from the governmental funds, capital asset listing for fiscal year 2015. These deletions have already been reflected in the city's CAFER for fiscal 15, and we're just asking to be able to delete them from the listing.
Questions? Supra Zbukowski.
Nancy, can you walk us through, and I sent you this question previously, the seven vehicles, eight vehicles?
Do you want me to go over that next? Because that's under the, I think it's a different action.
Okay. Hold on to that question.
So just to clarify for everyone, this just takes the audit results and the CAFER and puts it in, actually into our books. So everything matches and is aligned.
That's correct.
Anybody else? I don't see any motions in order. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make it.
Motion.
I move to allow the Finance Department to delete capital assets from the governmental capital asset listing for fiscal year 2014-15.
Motion and a second. On the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay carried unanimous. Okay. Let's take up the next deletion of assets with respect to the Fire Department.
So this is to delete capital assets from the business-type activity funds, capital asset listing for fiscal year 15. And again, they've already been reflected in the city's financial statements for fiscal 15.
I said Fire Department. I'm wrong. Okay. Go. All right.
And then on Brad's question, you wanted to know.
There's eight vehicles listed that is being transferred to other departments. So first question is, how many of them are actually going to be liquidated, and how many are going to be retained? And, and this is typically Lori's question, are we increasing the fleet there for the maintenance cost for those vehicles?
I can go through each of the vehicles if you'd like. The, the first one, the Chevy Malibu is being transferred over to Community Development. According to Public Works, this shouldn't have been under the water fund and is still being used by the, by code enforcement. The next one, the Ford pickup truck, the 1995 Ford. This will go to auction in the spring, and a replacement has already been ordered. The Chevy Tahoe has been replaced, the existing unit has been reassigned to a park ranger, and the old park ranger unit will be going to auction this spring. The Dodge pickup truck is currently in service at wastewater treatment plant, and no replacement unit has been ordered yet. And I've actually sent an email to Public Works. I'm not sure if that will add an additional vehicle to the fleet. Let's see. The GMC pickup truck will go to auction this spring. A replacement unit has been ordered. A replacement unit has been ordered. The 2003 Ford pickup has been replaced. This unit was transferred to the cemetery as they had a unit that had been burned up in a fire. The 2003 Ford has been replaced. This unit was transferred to Parks. The old unit went to auction a few years ago, so that was something that we had missed and not taken it off the books in a prior year. And then the last one is the backhoe has been reassigned to the landfill, and the old unit is going to go to auction in the spring. So there's potentially one.
Public comment? Seeing none, ready for a motion? Somebody want to make a motion?
I will. Go ahead, Lori. I move to allow the Finance Department to delete capital assets from the business-type activity funds, capital asset listing for fiscal year 2014-15.
There's a motion and a second. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none, carried unanimously. Okay. Let's take up the next item. Nancy?
This action is to accept the Carson City Cost Allocation Plan for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2015. The cost allocation plan for fiscal year '15 has been completed by Mahoney and Associates. The plan was prepared using a consistent approach in treatment of direct and indirect costs. Actual expenditure information was obtained from the financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2015. The allocated costs will be internal service charge expenditures to various special revenue funds and enterprise funds, with the revenue going to the general fund. Since we use this plan to determine our allocations for our fiscal '17 budget, we take the allocation done by Mahoney and Associates and adjust it to account for payroll increases from fiscal '15 to fiscal '17. And then also for Public Works, we adjusted to reflect the projects that they have anticipated that they'll be working on for fiscal '17. And I have Michelle here from Mahoney and Associates also, if you would have any questions on the report.
We do have some questions. Lori, first.
Thank you. So I... Just to disclose, I discussed some issues last night with Nancy. Sorry that Monday was a holiday, so it kind of put us in a crunch to try and get some answers. But I want to specifically look to page 364 of your packets, if anyone wants to follow along. So Mahoney and Associates gets us to the $3,742, which is the proposed cost line that is the actuals based on fiscal year '15, real numbers from the audit. Then where we remove the $1,780 for Public Works, and then that gets redistributed down below, it says add Public Works per Darren allocation, and that now moves to $2,002,33,000. It's a different methodology than the 6% add that was done for the entire rest of the cost allocation plan, because 6% would give us $1,887 in Public Works, and it rises to $2,002, which is an additional $346,000. And the reason that I bring this up is typically in a cost allocation plan, if you're going to use estimated numbers to charge a cost allocation, you would then generally have what's called a true-up period that comes back and says what really did happen. If we're going to estimate $2,002 in Public Works' cost allocation, where is the actuals? And I draw the example, what I did is went back to the actual 2015 proposed cost allocation and using the sewer operation fund as an example. We charged $1,095,385, and the actuals would have been around nine... Actually, would have been $985. So we overcharged the sewer account $110,000. So my question is, why aren't we doing a true-up if that... If we're going to use the methodology of estimating, which again, it's perfectly acceptable, but I don't see the true-up number giving those funds back money they're entitled to or charging them more if they're entitled. Or we should just stick with the proposed cost, and you're lagging the two years behind collecting real dollars. So... And I'm not advocating which method is the most appropriate, but if we're going to do estimated cost allocations, we need to do a true-up so that the funds are properly allocated.
Want to answer that?
This probably isn't a good answer, but we've been using the same methodology probably for an excess of 10 years. And, you know, it's a consistent approach to being able to figure out the budget numbers, but I would be happy to look into, you know, changing the process in the future.
Follow-up. Can I...
Just so that people are aware of what I'm after here is, the enterprise funds are generally the ones that are paying a cost allocation fee. And that is appropriate, that the general fund expense that is provided to those accounts, we need cost recovery. So I don't have an issue there. But what I want to make sure is, we're not overcharging those funds and recovering based on an estimate that is never trued up, because one example here alone is $110,000. It costs the sewer account, and we're not giving it back. That's not right either, because the ratepayer and the rates are established based on everything that the sewer account does. And I know the public is very critical right now where all the rates are, and I want to make sure that everything that's charged to that account is appropriate, and we're not overrecovering for the fee.
So why don't you tell us a little bit about whether, you know, which analysis is used, which... Why it's used, and if there's an over-recovery of assets... If there is an over-recovery under either methodology, I got the true-up one. I understand that.
So looking at this in more detail after Lori's question last night, we discovered that initially, the Public Works '15 numbers, they're not actual, actual. They don't keep track... They didn't in '15 keep track of their time as far as sewer or water, specifically in those departments, for 1013012. That's the Public Works piece that we're breaking out. So because that top number that is being allocated in '15 via Michelle's report is not 100% accurate either, I can't guarantee that a true-up would be 100% accurate either. They're all kind of estimates. Now, currently, I understand that Public Works is keeping track better of their salaries and where exactly they're being spent. So as we go forward, I definitely think this can be adjusted, but going back 10 years and truing it up wouldn't really solve a problem. Does that help?
So let me understand what you just said there, and maybe... So what you're saying is that you have nothing to true... You have nothing to true-up against in this particular instance or in the instance where you've done this, or in this type of allocation plan or for this account? Is that what's going on here?
For the Public Works issue that Lori is bringing up.
But you will... You do this year, you're saying, so we could true-up going forward, is what you're saying?
I believe so. I believe in '16, they're keeping much better track. Oh, there he is, right there.
I just love being here.
He has great maps. I can't understand why he can't pinpoint his work.
Spreadsheets, allocations, social media, just me. Bring it all here. Art benches, yeah, all that. So just a little bit of background of what Sheri's talking about is, when I came on board, there was some tracking going on, but there was some confusion amongst various different department engineering staff as to, are we only tracking for grants so that we can get reimbursed? Are we tracking for everything? This person's estimated to pay 50% out of water and sewer, but they end up working on some parks projects or juvenile parking project. There wasn't really a way to true it up that well. And so one of the tasks I... Within a week, Darren gave me was, we need to fix this. This is broken. So I kind of have approached it as engineering is our own little nonprofit business within the city, and we track 100% of our time. So we will... We've got probably, starting from October of '14, we've got probably a year's worth from there. So that fiscal year is not complete, but the fiscal year that started July 1 of '15, coming to June 30, will be complete. If that gives you an idea of kind of what the discussion that you've guys been having.
So we're saying that we could next year add the line for the actual true-up based on the actual work completed, so that proper fund accounting occurs in each account?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think that definitely is a possibility, starting in '16.
And a lot of what, at least on the staff time under 1013012, has been cleaned up is that a lot of what we're working on goes to a capital project. So it already hits that through a direct billing, so there's less to true-up anyways by kind of closing some of those loose ends, so.
So... Can I continue? I'm sorry. So following along that line, then, if we were to approve this, that $2,002... The discussion is, should we be really approving the $2,002? Or the same method... There's a $346,112 additional dollars based on Darren's allocation methodology that of what he thinks is going to happen in the 2017, when he doesn't even have... We don't even have a 2017 budget yet. So he's estimating what he thinks is already going to happen in his 2017 budget that we haven't approved yet. Or should we leave it in the same methodology is you remove the $1,780 and add the same 6% salary adjustment, because they got the same raises as everyone else, and make it $1,887,787? I'm concerned the true-up would be large and be a big hit to the future budget, to the general fund. I don't want to see a huge swing, is what I'm concerned about.
The numbers that are provided on that line from Darren Schultz are actually based on fiscal '17 payroll projections that we've given to Public Works. And then I know you're looking at the large increase under... Was it sewer?
Just during the total of the 3 million employees.
Yeah. So during the fiscal '16 budget process, we actually approved an additional 3 1/2 employees in the Public Works Department of the General Fund, so that would account for most of that large increase, because you're... You know, the actuals are looking at fiscal '15 versus in '16, they added an additional 3 1/2 employees that they're allocating out.
So you're more comfortable using the $2,002 and then taking the risk of what the true-up will be?
That's correct.
And I'm talking about truing up across everything, not just Public Works. I mean, you'll add a true-up line to...
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure you were...
Yeah.
Not just this. We're going to true-up the whole cost allocation plan.
Right.
So I'm definitely with Lori on this. The city managers made transparency a priority, but along with transparency comes accuracy. And so it sounds like we've already started the process of being able to correct one deficiency was not... Which was not tracking expenses correctly. So now it's just one more step, the next step, which would be adding the true-up line. And either way, I'm... You know, I agree with Lori. It can be just left on the proposed cost, and you true it up with the lag time, or you can actually make the adjustments. But either way, within a two-year period, we're going to have the real numbers so that we know that the enterprise funds aren't being overcharged or undercharged. So I am in complete agreement, and it sounds like we're halfway there, and we just need to take that one more step.
Where's the allocation to the district court? Not justice courts, but district court?
There's no allocation to the district court because that's in the general fund. This is to only allocate expenses from the general fund to the enterprise funds and some of the special revenue funds.
Okay. So the district courts are picked up in the general fund?
That's correct.
All right. All right. Public comment? Anybody? Board, ready?
I move to accept the Carson City Cost Allocation Plan for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2015, for use in preparing the fiscal year 2017 Carson City budget.
Second.
Motion and second.
Do you have a discussion?
Discussion's in order.
Can we just add to the motion that we direct them for the future year to add the true-up line in the cost allocation, so that the plan comes in correctly next year?
The motion is amended as suggested.
Motion is amended, and the second accepts the amendment. On the motion, further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Good discussion. Okay. I'm glad I spent that holiday Monday reading this cost allocation plan.
It was big.
It was. Yeah, good. I got it. All right. All right. Let's take up 22F. This is assumptions.
Nancy Paulson, Carson City CFO.
This is for the fiscal year budget.
Right. So this item is a presentation, discussion, and possible direction regarding the assumptions that staff will use to prepare the city's fiscal '17 budget. The main item that we need to do today is set the fiscal year '17 property tax rate. Department of Taxation requires local governments to inform them of the property tax rate they intend to use by February 22. So over the last... The Board has reduced the property tax rate 2 cents over the last two fiscal years, so the current levy is 3.52 per $100 of assessed valuation. The maximum we can levy is $3.66. So we are well below the cap. We could either raise the tax rate, lower the tax rate, or keep it the same for fiscal '17. So on the first slide here, I want to look at the second column first. So this column shows the increase over the prior year in property tax revenue if we leave the tax rate the same. So that's the $243,000. This was... This forecast was run through the property tax program based on fiscal '17 information... Assessed valuation information provided by the assessor's office. The first column, the $615,000, reflects the fiscal '17 increase that we had projected when we were doing our five-year projections. Each year when we're preparing the budget, we do a five-year projection to make sure that we can cover the ongoing costs of the general fund, you know, out for five years. So for '17, we had projected a 3% increase over the prior year. So as you can see right off the bat, for fiscal '17, we have a shortfall of $372,000. If the tax rate is decreased, this would just add an additional amount to the shortfall for '17. The main reason for the shortfall is that the property tax for both... The property tax cap for both residential and commercial properties is only 0.2% for fiscal '17. In prior year, the cap was 3% for residential and 3.2% for commercial. We're anticipating that this low cap will likely to continue as the 10-year average change in assessed value continues to be a negative number due to the declines in assessed value from fiscal '11 through fiscal '14. Then the next slide. Yeah. So this slide just shows the countywide tax rates for all the counties in Nevada for fiscal '16. I highlighted some of our closest neighbors, and as you can see, Carson is below Douglas, Lyon, and Washoe County. And we actually have one of the lowest property tax rates in the state. Next, I'll go on to the consolidated tax revenues. Go back to the other. So this slide shows the sales tax rates for all the counties in Nevada. Carson is a little bit higher in the sales tax rate, and among our neighbors, we are just below Washoe County. Okay, go to the next slide. So with five months of data in for fiscal '16, we're...
Nancy, how does it... On the sales tax, how does it... Go back to that slide, then. Douglas County has a sales tax of 7.10. They're a guaranteed sales tax county. What does that mean, if you know?
I think they, they receive their sales tax based on a formula for the SECRT. Yeah.
And do you know whether or not Carson City contributes any of our sales tax goals to make up that guarantee amount?
I think a small amount is being taken from Carson City. So, as you know, for the first five months of the year, the C-Tax has been up 9.59%. If we go through and we project 5% increases for the remainder of the year, that shows we'll be up 6.87% over the prior year. For our initial projections, we wanted to stay on the conservative side, and just estimate that '16 will increase by 5% over '15, and then will increase '17 by another 4%. So, the first column is the fiscal '15 actuals, which is 22, almost 23 million. The red column is the fiscal '16 budget. The next column would be what we're estimating with a 5% increase over fiscal '15. That would give us an additional 609,000. And then, the last column is increasing the fiscal '16 estimate by 4%, and that will give us an additional 965,000.
There's a potential, that you read about in papers, about a new auto dealership coming to town. Are any of those projections included in this?
No, we have not included those in our projections yet. So, the next slide is an even better slide, and we hope that this is what actually happens. So, this slide, the first two columns are the same. The third column is if our current 9.59%, you know, increase in C-Tax continues, you know, for the rest of fiscal '16. That will give us an additional $1,664,000 in revenues for '16. And then, when you bump that up 4%, we'll get an additional little over $1 million for fiscal '17. Per the Department of Taxation's preliminary revenue projections, they are projecting, just for sales tax, a 7% increase for '16, and a 4% increase for '17. So, we're pretty much in line with Department of Taxation. Let's see.
But not GFOA? You're saying we're going with the Department of Taxation, 8.3%, which is a month, reserves versus GFOA that recommends two months?
No, that was back on the other slide, as far as sales tax projections for fiscal '17.
But, but on ending, on the rainy day and having an ending fund balance, GFO, they recommend two, two months.
That's correct.
Our financial planning is only one month.
Right.
Okay.
Well, that's what we hope to, to achieve. So, this slide is just a projection of the fund balance that would be necessary to maintain a 5% ending fund balance, or increase the ending fund balance to our goal of 8.3%. So, you can see that's a difference of a little over $2 million. Like Lori, or Supervisor Bagwell said, GFOA recommends 16.6%, which is two months. According, I just wanted to bring this up. According to our most recent bond ratings from Moody's and Standard and Poor's, one of the ways they suggested to make our debt rating go up is significant and sustained increases in reserve levels for the general fund. So, the next slide, this is just the percentage of debt service payments to the general fund, total general fund expenditures. And, as you can see, that percentage is, has been going down. And then, I put up a calendar, and I'll just go over some of the highlights. So, tomorrow, we're hoping to deliver the base budget projections to the departments. And, on March 11th, we're hoping to get the information back from the departments, along with any supplemental requests that they may have. Then, on March 17th, I'm hoping to bring back the status on the fiscal '17 budget. And, at that point, we'll have a more clear picture of what savings we have, and that. And so, and then, April, we're planning on doing an open house to the public on April 4th, and then coming before the board on April 7th, to go over the tentative budget and the capital improvement plan. And then, May 16th is when the board adopts the final fiscal '17 budget.
Questions, Nancy?
Just in general. Nancy, is that enough? So, the open house that you have on projecting for April 4th, is that enough time for many of the public input? If we want it, if staff want to recommend a different change, is that enough time for you to prepare to change anything that's going to be presented on the 7th? Because my question is, don't you have to post us the week before? So, what good is it to have a public open house for comment? I'm just wondering. Should the open house date be before you post the agenda online, and the packets, so they can give you input? I mean, that was our whole purpose, of having the public.
Yeah, I think my thought process was to get their input, and then, with, along with their input, and then the board's input on the 7th, then we can make any changes that are necessary before we go and do the final.
That's enough time for you to gather up all their information to present on the 7th to us?
It wouldn't be in the board packet, but...
But it's enough time, okay?
It's late material, I guess.
Can you go back to the, I think it was your second slide? Keep going. That one? Okay. So, you haven't read shortfall 372,000. I look at this slide, and I see an increase in revenue in 243,000. So, my personal feeling is, I'm okay with property tax revenue being flat. I've been pretty adamant that I'd like to see the property tax rate lowered every year that I'm here. And I understand that we have some complications this year, because of CPI and the property tax cap, that are going to impact our budget. So, I'm open to leaving it the same this year, to overcome that. But, I just want to be clear, that we're not actually, there's no real shortfall. It is a, it's a projection based, or it's a shortfall based on a projection that we've known for three years now, is not accurate, because we've been lowering the property tax rate. So, I just want that to be on the record. I don't want anybody out there to think that we've got a $372,000 hole, if we don't raise the property tax, because that's not the case. And then, you know, we're going to have a conversation about our financial policies. And I'm on the same page with, with you, Nancy. I think that it's imperative that we change our ending fund balance policy from 5% to 8.33%, and also raise our goal rate higher than the 8.33%. We also, this last year is part of our policies, we put, we've got almost $1,004,000 in contingency, 823,000 in infrastructure repair, 416,000 in fleet equipment replacement. The only thing that we really haven't tackled yet is our stabilization fund. So, I think that we are on the path to balancing both our revenue side and our expense side, and meeting our financial priorities. And I want to make sure that we continue to do that, and take advantage of the improving economy. So, I think that we're doing good things, and we need to continue doing what we've been doing. But, there is a balance there, and I don't want to get into, into a methodology where we just automatically raise property tax, because we can. I look at the slide that you had, where 11 counties have a higher property tax than Carson. So, we're 12 out of 17 counties, and I say that's a good thing.
And, if you can go back to that same slide, with the shortfall? And I understand the principle of this, but if there is no shortfall, why is that word in there, shortfall?
So, that's just a shortfall from what we had, when we had done our five-year projections. You know, we factor in all the contract changes, all the roll-up costs in the general fund. So, that, I just wanted to show that we had started out for fiscal '17, you know, thinking we were going to have a 3% increase in the property taxes, and it's coming in only about a 1.1% increase.
Can I, can I ask Dave Dolly a question, since he's in the audience? Because I, I want to see if I can hone in on an issue, too. Thanks. Sorry to make you come up.
That's why I'm here.
There you go. So, one of the questions that I have is, when you're projecting what? The construction work in progress, new, new projects that are coming online, is that coordinated with LEI, for all of the potential new building permits and stuff that are out there? I'm trying to get a handle on. The other issue is, I think I learned yesterday, that you're projecting about 4 million, and then, only 1.5 of that in assessed value, of course. But, about 4 million in new projects for '17? Is, can you tell me what method you use to project that?
Well, unfortunately, I don't do the estimates anymore. I don't project the new construction. We, what we do is, we send all of the, it's called a segregation report, to the Department of Taxation, and we're just including actual numbers. Right now, we have a little over $1 million worth of new for the building itself. And I'm not sure how the department comes up with, with the new, but typically, we're seeing about $7 million worth of new construction going on. And so, I'm assuming that it's going to be right around there. But, these numbers that came in are not based on the new constructions, based on the existing. And we did have a total of about a 6% increase this year in assessed valuations throughout Carson City.
So, just to clarify, then, the estimate that they're using here does not include new properties, only existing assessed values? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, we also potentially have the opportunity with everything, as the economy is growing here, at $3.52 rate, or 3.50 rate? That would be all additional revenue? I just, I just want to clarify.
I believe the projections included a million and a half of new construction.
Right. But, but it doesn't include all of the, the, over and above the new, which is going to be coming on the roll between now and, and June 30th?
I just wanted to clarify, too, that I don't, I don't think there's a $372,000 shortfall, potentially, actually, in your estimate, because we're going to get more new coming in also. So, I don't think there'll be a shortfall.
Tax cap, Dave, is what, for this coming year? Instead of 3%, what is the cap for residential?
We have not gotten the firm numbers yet, but based on the calculations of what's, what's working, it's going to be 0.1% for a property tax cap, for both commercial and residential.
So, that means that no matter what happens to the property tax rate here, that the actual tax bill to the taxpayer will essentially remain flat?
Well, what I calculated is, if you have like about a $300,000 house, your taxes are going to go about $9.
Yeah. Essentially flat.
Correct. And, and if I might, you asked that question, and I forgot what, what I was going to respond. I was going to respond something to Mrs. Bagwell. I believe my calculations, if, if we were to... I, I've got the number, I just can't figure out how to express it. There's about a 70, when you calculate what the new construction would be on a $7 million, it's, it's not that much. I mean, it's only about 70,000. So, it's, it's not a huge amount.
Okay. Well, let me say, I, I agree with what Supervisor Bonkowski said, and, you know, and I think Lori said that as well, you know. I look at my 401K as kind of a gauge of what's going on, and I see, you know, and you read all the national news, about, you know, what's going on with the global economy, and what's going on with all this, and, and, you know, I, I'm not one who says the stock market is a, is a absolute gauge, but I think that the more prudent we are, the better we're going to be. Because I hope that Northern Nevada is diversifying enough, and we've got enough economic momentum going on, that even if something did happen, kind of catastrophically on the global economy, that we're going to be okay up here in the north. But, that said, I think we're better off if we're prudent in what we do. And I, and I know that the rainy, rainy day fund is designed to help us live through those, those days. And rainy day funds are not subject to, you know, they're not subject to collective bargaining issues. So, you know, that's why I'm, I'm, personally, I'm in favor of kind of leaving the tax rate the way it is, because, and I don't think we're going to see that CPI change. Dave, you may be correct, correctly or wrong, but as the rolling 10-year average starts to pick up, drop off at least the last year, or the last two years of the boom economy? I mean, I don't know how long it's going to be. I mean, there's going to be an increase in valuation, there's no doubt about that, I think, unless something else happens. But, but the actual tax bill, from the cap standpoint, is going to probably remain fairly low, like 1 or 2 tenths of a percent, or 1 tenth of a percent. You agree with that, or not?
Mr. Mayor, you're absolutely correct. We had, this, this year, when they calculated the 10-year growth average, we had a 20% reduction, or the year that we had a 20% increase, that actually dropped off. And so, this next year, we have a 16.6% increase that's going to be dropping off. And then, it's still, we're not seeing those kind of growths right now. You know, we're seeing about a 6% growth for this year and last year. And so, our 10-year rolling average is going to be a negative next year. I'm pretty sure of that. And, and we have been basing the tax cap for the last number of years on the CPI times 2. And so, I do see this being an issue for next year as well. Unless CPI really increases next year, we're going to have a negative number, or we're going to have a, a very small cap, like they did this year. The other issue is the fact that the Nevada Legislature does meet next year. This is not, not an issue just for Carson City, it's an issue statewide. And so, if they decide to address it, this could be a huge issue for next year, when we determine the budget for next year.
It's going to be a fascinating discussion, because I think we're now talking about negative interest rates, too. Interesting. I'm sorry to get off the track here. Supervisor Bonkowski, and then Supervisor Lee, about, I'm sorry.
Dave, I know you can't give us actual numbers, but can you give us your best guess on what the impact would be for a 2-cent lower tax rate, and a 2-cent higher tax rate?
Supervisor, supervisor, sorry, tongue tied, Supervisor Bonkowski. Unfortunately, I don't do revenue. That's not my issue. What I can, Nancy can. What I wanted to, to come and help out with, if I could, is just the determination of the property tax cap. We deal strictly with the assessments of the property, and all of the revenues and everything are done with the Treasurer's Office and, and Finance.
Right. But, to get the number that I'm looking for, it takes both of you. Because you can calculate the actual dollar amount, but you're calculating in the cap. So, it would take both, because we're not going to get all the money. We're only going to get a very, very small portion of it.
Right. And I do believe that the Treasurer's Office created a Performer Report, and I believe Nancy has that report, which, which actually shows the differences of the, the calculations based on the tax rate itself.
That's right. So, a 2, a 2-cent reduction in the rate would equate to about $80,000. I didn't do a 2-cent increase, but I did bump it all the way up to $3.66, and that only provides an additional $20,000. So, it's going to be a number less than that.
I would think it's probably $20,000 for basically any increase for 2 cents up, because of the cap. It isn't going to change.
I just want to, I have a comment, and that is that I concur with, with the discussion up here today, and, and the fact that Waste Management is going to be raising their rates, and that water and sewer rates are, are growing. I feel that the property tax should remain the same at this point in time, and I am in favor of increasing our rainy day fund. I think that's prudent, so.
Okay. Public, want to weigh in? Anybody? Anybody back there? All right. Then, we'll entertain a motion to, I think for our hearing up here, we'll try this. We'll entertain a motion to leave the property tax rate, for the purpose of building the budget that's possibly changed, as we get down the road here, and we have further public input, and we see the budget. public input, and we see the budget. I mean, this is, this is a building block step, but it's not an irreversible one. We'll take a motion to leave that at 3:52, and see where it goes. Go.
I move to direct staff to use $3.52 as the property tax rate in preparing the fiscal year 2016, 2017 Carson City budget.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously, it's okay. We're doing all right here. Let's take up item 23, non-action items. Anybody got anything to put out here? Anybody wants to, go, Jim, go.
I had a couple of emails from citizens, and I clarified this with the district attorney. We are not installing the Wi-Fi, per se, in the downtown corridors. What we are installing, to my knowledge, or what I've been told, is the, the furnishings that will allow a vendor to put in the Wi-Fi wires. We're just putting in the piping, I guess, is the basics for that. I do, touching on the mayor's, brought up the new car dealership coming in, there was an article in the paper to the editor. Again, I'm getting email on that, and at this juncture, I don't have any answers for that. I do want to mention, I do appreciate the city manager's updates, I think they're very helpful and insightful. I did bring up before the rate structure for the MAC and the Aquatic Center, for those with handicap and low income, if we could look at that and possibly give a better rate to citizens with some handicaps and a low income, so, thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Raybough?
I'd just like to comment that I'd like to extend sympathies out to John Procaccini and the Procaccini family, and Kitty McKay and the loss of their grandson. And the services are at 3 o'clock tomorrow at the Performance Hall at the Brewery Arts.
Anybody else? I think that, you know, speaking of the sales, speaking of the auto dealer coming in, they've, they've been talking with the city manager about potential assistance when they come here, so I think that the RAC committee's going to be seeing something of that, and we'll see where, see where that goes. Okay? All right. All right, anybody else? Anything else? We sure? We can't be done, it's noon. I mean, come on, come on, you're hungry. All right, we're going to be in, I don't mean to, well, I do mean to kid around, okay? It's, we'll be in recess until 2 PM, okay? Recession.